We will go ahead and call the Cuyahoga County Committee of the Hall for Thursday, October 22 to order. The clerk, please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown?
She's here, I saw her.
Mr. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Council President Brady?
Here.
And Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Thank you. Before we begin public comment, I just want to welcome everyone here and welcome my colleagues to Phase Two of our Budget Review Process. This is actually Phase Two of the Functional Area Review. Today, we're going to focus primarily on the Health and Human Services areas. I just want to draw everyone's attention that we have, from the original agenda, made a revision, a few revisions, and Metro Health will not be heard today, they will be heard on the 29th, and the Adams Board has been moved to November 5th. And additionally, we have added a two-hour session, Session Number Nine, to November We're going to have public comment related to the agenda in a minute, but also, because we're doing this in sessions, we're going to have an afternoon session, we'll allow public comment unrelated to the agenda before we break for noon. Questions and answers to my colleagues we received, as you know, we submitted questions to the administration, they did respond back yesterday. Each of us was emailed, the responses included in today's package at your station are the written responses to their questions. We anticipate today to receive, hopefully by noon tomorrow's, answers to the questions we pose for tomorrow's session, which will focus on public safety and justice affairs. Also, I just want to draw my colleagues' attention, there's been an administrative addition or correction to the budget package for Metro Health, you have that in front of you, and that is to be inserted and replaced of Section Three, Page Four. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk?
Dr. Janelle Vick?
And just as a reminder regarding public comment, we limit public comment to three minutes, especially with today's lengthy agenda, so I just wanted to make sure everybody understood the ground rules.
Thank you. Good morning, Counsel. Thank you so much for your service. I'm the Executive Director at Cleveland Hearing and Speech Center. I want to thank you for your support in 2015 for our Audiology Patient Assistance Program. This program provides hearing aids for individuals who otherwise could not afford them. Let me put this into a context that a hearing aid can cost about $2,000. For many of Cuyahoga County residents, this cost is out of reach, but the opportunity to hear should not be out of reach. Hearing gives people the opportunity to participate in their families, in the workforce, in education, and our seniors deserve the opportunity to continue their civic engagement. With your support in this year so far, and other support as well, we have provided hearing aids to over 110 Cuyahoga County residents. Those residents received over 165 hearing aids. I want to give you some context of the ongoing need. 2% of all individuals have hearing loss that's disabling. Once you get over 65, a third of all adults have hearing loss that's disabling. Less than 25% of these individuals with disabling hearing loss obtain hearing aids, and that's simply because the cost is too much of a barrier. Thanks to your support, we've removed that barrier for a lot of Cuyahoga County residents, but the need is ongoing. So thank you so much for your support, this is an essential and really beneficial program, and I also thank you for your consideration of this program in 2016 and 17.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Edward Stockhauser.
My name is Ed Stockhausen, and I'm the Northeast Ohio Hub Director for the Mental Health and Addiction Advocacy Coalition, better known as the MAC. Our organization represents a broad spectrum of voices and leaders invested in the success of our community, particularly those needing mental health and addiction services. As such, we are deeply concerned about the cuts to the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board of Cuyahoga County, as laid out in the proposed budget. We know that the Adams Board and the county executive are currently in negotiations on this topic, and we are mindful of and support these conversations. Still, it is important to be clear that a $6.7 million cut to the mental health and addiction funding will result in the loss of critical services necessary to support Cuyahoga children and adults with behavioral health disorders. It's worth bearing in mind that behavioral health intersects with many of the major policy proposals offered in this budget. There are clear and real intersections with early childhood development, job readiness training, infant mortality, and successful reentry in criminal justice initiatives. Cutting these vital services now, at a time when heroin and opioids, and even the addition of fentanyl into the drug supply, is simply dangerous. MAC members recognize and appreciate that the budget in front of you, in many respects, is a blueprint for moving our county forward. We want to remind you that behavioral health services strengthen our county, they strengthen the health of our workforce, and they strengthen the health of our children and our families. Investing in mental health and addiction services is investing in our children, and it is investing in our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
James McCafferty?
Council President Brady, Finance Chair, Greenspan, rest of council. I'm here to represent a coalition of agencies that treat the kids of Cuyahoga County. I represent Belfair, Applewood, Beechbrook, Parmadele Catholic Charities, Guidestone, and my own agency, which is the Cleveland Christian Home. We've partnered with county government for 30 to 35 years to treat the children and families of Cuyahoga County. These kids are the county's kids. They're your most vulnerable citizens, they're kids that need services, they're kids that are at risk. We see them as our kids as well. Our agencies are all Cuyahoga County agencies, so we share this burden with you, and we truly see these as our kids. I want you to consider that when you talk about budget cuts, we don't get cut from just one agency, we get cut from four agencies. I have a contracts with Children's Services, Juvenile Court, the Adams Board, and Justice Affairs. All of those agencies receiving cuts reflect cuts to myself as well, so it's not just one cut we receive, we receive many cuts while this is going through. Our funding, the way we operate, is a three-legged stool. We use county revenue from our contracts, we use Medicaid dollars, and we use philanthropic dollars to treat the children and families that we receive, and we thank you very much for that. We received a 2% increase in 2013 from Cuyahoga County. That's the only increase we've had in 10 years in our per diem. We have not gotten an increase in our Medicaid dollars since 1996. Medicaid is based upon the old ADC regulations. ADC preceded TANF. I'm probably one of the few people in this room that knows what ADC was, in fact. We also get philanthropic dollars. And while over the years, our gross amount of philanthropic dollars has remained stable, the percentage of our budgets it reflects decreases. In 2001, the gap between service to a kid and family and what we get from the county Medicaid was $45. Today, it's $137 and growing. So we ask that you again consider our needs and what you can do for us. The other thing I would like to do is to mention managed care to you. I'm on an executive committee that Director Presto has started, and he is going to start to deal with the managed care issue, but I think it's important that council be involved in this, and we talked to Finance Chair Greenspan about this. Managed care has come to kids and families in Cuyahoga County in a behavioral health sense. It can result in the control of utilization of services, reduced rates, and if that happens, those costs that aren't covered by Medicaid are going to fall to county government to cover. And that could be, in your next budget, a huge problem for this group of individuals. With that, I know I'm done, I want to thank you. Again, the most vulnerable of this county really fall to county government. Some of the other things that the county does is a shared responsibility with other types of government, but care for our most vulnerable kids, seniors, the mentally ill, those with drug addiction, truly falls to local county governments to do, and this is a huge responsibility for the government. Thank you, and I wish you the best, you have very hard decisions to make.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Simon and Jones are in attendance.
The next speaker, Gail Long.
Good morning, Chairperson Greenspan and members of the county council. My name is Gail Long, and I am a member of Community Partners for Affordable Accessible Healthcare and Northern Ohioans for Budget Legislation Equality, a taxpayer and a voter. Access to quality, affordable, and accessible healthcare has been an interest of mine for over 50 years. I think I'm older than McCafferty. In fact, some would say a passion to the extent of going overboard at times. I am also a firm believer in public services. If you put these two things together, you would probably have guessed already that I am here to support our public health system, Metro Health. Let me say that from the start, I am not here to support one Health and Human Services program against the other. All these programs, either in existence or being proposed, are important and meet critical human needs. As taxpayers, as advocates, and as consumers of service, we should not be put in a position of having to rob Peter to pay Paul. That is why I voted to increase my taxes two years ago, when this council voted to put a Health and Human Services levy on the ballot that would increase them. I have never voted against a levy, and in fact, I volunteer to work on levy campaigns. That being said, I am here to support Metro Health System subsidy at the current $40 million level. No cuts to the subsidy of the system. I think that to propose that it be cut is extremely short-sighted for several reasons that include: Metro Health has received cuts in two areas under the Affordable Care Act, one, primary care physicians' education, and two, hospital care assurance dollars. Medicare reimbursements are now based in part on readmissions to the hospital. These rates for safety net hospitals like Metro will be higher than they are for systems that serve a higher-income population. Poor people do not have the support systems that allow them to recuperate at home, in a homeless shelter or a relative or friend's couch. Metro will lose Medicare dollars. State Medicaid reimbursement rates are not going up, and perhaps most importantly, the impending 1115 waiver that will be submitted by the governor sometime next year. If this waiver is approved by the federal government and all consumers of Medicaid, with the exception of children and disabled people, will be required to pay into a health savings account. It will mean, in my opinion, total disaster for healthcare providers who serve this population. Under the waiver that will be proposed, if a payment is not made, individuals will no longer be eligible for Medicaid. For Metro, this means subsidizing their care. We are not talking about pennies here, but millions of dollars. This is why I support the Health and Human Services Levy and the subsidy to Metro Health. If this ever-evolving healthcare system where healthcare is not a right but a privilege, where people cannot afford healthcare, are looked at as unworthy rather than as human beings, Cuyahoga County cannot find itself unable to meet the needs of the uninsured and underinsured by weakening our public hospital. It serves as a safety net for all, regardless of their ability to pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gloria Aaron.
Chairman Greenspan and members of the county council, my name is Gloria Aaron. I too am a member of Noble and CPAC, and I am here today representing them and urging you to restore Metro Health Systems County subsidy to the full $40 million and not to support any cuts as proposed by the county administrator. Unlike the Cleveland Clinic's choice to expand in England, Metro Health, our publicly-owned hospital, stays committed to serving all Cuyahoga County residents regardless of their ability to pay. Although the expansion of Medicaid drastically reduced the number of uninsured, many still stayed uninsured because they did not meet the guidelines. We must also recognize Medicaid's future is uncertain, as the consented administration is required by the recent pass by Indiana budget to apply for the 1115 waiver. If this waiver is approved by the federal government, thousands of individuals will have to pay for a health savings account in order to maintain eligibility for Medicaid. If they were unable to do that, they'll no longer be eligible. And people that are on Medicaid are there because they cannot afford regular healthcare, so they're not going to have the ability to pay a savings account. They're going to have to choose again between medicine, paying for the insurance, or buying So if they lose their Medicaid, that again will increase the number of people who will be uninsured and will go to Metro, because that is the hospital that takes care of the largest number of uninsured and underinsured Cuyahoga residents. I mean, that has been for years and years, and I'm sure you can check the records and will see that. One of the other things that causes a problem is that Metro has had cuts both on the federal and the state level, and H cap continues to be making cuts. So their funding sources continue to go down, while Cuyahoga's poverty rate is not going down, and more and more people are taken where they have to go to Metro because they have no healthcare. I myself, I'm a Metro patient, and am very happy with the service I've had there. Recently, I just had open-heart surgery. That bill was $71,000. Because I'm on Medicare, 80% of that was paid by Medicare, but the rest, $14,200, because I am rated at Metro, was picked up by Metro. Now, if you multiply me, plus thousands of other people in the same situation, and then the thousands of other patients that have no insurance and are not old enough for Medicare, all that money is responsible for Medicaid, by Metro's own rating system. So I urge you, as does our organization, to make sure that they receive the full $40 million subsidy, and that they are required to make no cuts in their budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosie Palfy?
My name is Rosie Palfy. I'm a homeless advocate who has been a member of the County Office of Homeless Services Advisory Board since 2008. I also serve on the Department of Justice Cleveland Police Department's Mental Health Response Advisory Committee as a homeless advocate. I'm also a veteran who has previously experienced homelessness. The majority of funding for homeless programs comes from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. In the last three years, HUD has made major funding cuts to homeless programs nationwide. Every year, the cuts get worse, and we lose more programs. In fact, HUD is defunding supportive services-only programs. Instead, they're telling communities like ours to rely on our own mainstream resources. Now, our county executive wants to gut the budgets of the programs which provide these services. I didn't understand addiction until I became homeless. I didn't understand addiction because I didn't have one. During the two and a half years that I was homeless, I met many women who were addicted to drugs and alcohol. Almost every woman I met told me that when she finally got clean and sober, she realized one of two things. Either she had been self-medicating an undiagnosed mental illness, or she was trying to numb the pain from an abusive childhood, rape, domestic violence, or some other trauma. The saddest story was that of a recovering heroin addict I met. She didn't hit rock bottom until her six children were taken away from her. When she got clean, she was diagnosed with bipolar disorder. After all these years, suddenly, everything made sense to her. The Adams Board played an integral role in each of those women's recovery. I can't imagine where they'd be today without those programs. Moving on to the consent decree. Page 34 of the agreement between the Department of Justice and the City of Cleveland calls for the creation of a Mental Health Response Advisory Committee. The decree specifically calls for the Adams Board to be represented on this committee. Mr. Dennehy is the committee's chair. Our committee is new, but so far, two recurring themes have emerged. We need more resources in our community, not less. We also need to find effective solutions so that people can get the care they need before they end up in a crisis situation. Some of you may probably be thinking that this isn't the county's problem, this is the city of Cleveland's problem, but I beg to differ. Many of the men and women who become homeless in this county come from the suburbs. When they get here, they become the city of Cleveland's problem. They also bring their addictions and their mental illnesses with them, which require treatment. I don't know where these proposed Adams Board cuts will come from, but what I do know is that they will affect shelter operations, and I want to remind the county that they are responsible for the thousands of homeless men and women living in the shelters in this community, and I beg you not to cut the Adams Board budget. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that is the last speaker. However, I'd like to note that, for the record, Jose Feliciano, who is the chairman of the Hispanic Roundtable, has submitted testimony expressing concern about cuts to Health and Human Services for the record. And I'd also like to say to the speakers, if any of you would like to leave your comments or written testimony for the record with me, that would be great.
Thank you. Thank you. So today, as I stated, we start the budget sessions on the Functional Area Review, focusing on Health and Human Services, with the exception, as noted, of the Adams Board of Metro Health will be heard at a later time. As we begin these next two days of sessions in particular, the director, in this case, the interim director, Matt Carroll, will give an overview of the Health and Human Service Agencies. And today, we'll hear in the morning session from Children and Family Services, Senior and Adult Services, and Cuyahoga County Job and Family Services. To my colleagues, in the council binder, this starts on Tab Five, and in the executives' binder, it's Little i, Page One, starts this section. We'd like to, as we have normally done during these types of hearings, the presenter will make their presentation. I'd like to limit, I know it sounds ironic, limit the questions to three questions per round. Ironic that I say this. Limit three questions per round, out of respect for our colleagues to have the opportunity to answer or ask questions. So with that, Mr. Carroll, if you could please come forward.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. May I, at this time, read the item into the record?
Yes, please do.
Resolution Number 2015-0209, a resolution adopting the 2016-2017 Biannual Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Great, thank you.
Good morning. To the council president, Mr. Chairman, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for a few minutes today about the Department of Human Services. I'd like to make a couple general comments about the department. As you noted, we're dealing with the divisions of the department today. Our leadership there is ready to make their comments and take questions in turn, or to have them all present their statements and then ask questions of all of them, as you prefer, but I'll leave that to council to take that approach as you would like. I'm listed today on the agenda under the Office of Human Services, and the Office of Human Services has a specific budget with some specific details that you may have seen, but I'm going to talk for a moment first about the department in general, the Department of Human Services. That encompasses a wide range of activities and programs, and I want to try to present a few things that show the scope of the department and its incredible significance to the county. There are, in the four major agencies, three major agencies, actually, and the other smaller offices, there are a total of 2,245 county employees in those areas. That is 45% of the executives' staffing for 2016. Those agencies have a total of, just the budgets that you see before you, of $309 million. Again, a huge proportion of the county's budget and the county's activities. To give you some other idea of scope, in Senior Adult Services, this year, there would be 630,000 units of service provided. In the Child Support area and Job and Family Services, there will be $238 million in child support collected. In the Children and Family Services area, there are, what I have as 40,000 hotline calls and a neighborhood of 10,000 ongoing cases of different varieties. In the Job and Family Service area, there are 175,000 children that receive Medicaid benefits through the office, through that agency. This gives you, I think, a sense of the extreme level of significance of these organizations and of the work that they do. One sort of symbolic thing for me, in thinking about the scope and the importance of the department, I think some of you, many of you, may have been to the Hallie Building, I know this council has had many discussions about it, there is a storage facility there. And if you go there, you walk through and you see some shelving with file folders, but you keep walking and walking and walking and walking to the back of the facility, the floor that you're on, and it is just shelf after shelf after shelf of file folders, many of which are Child and Family Service cases from the past. And I think, to me, it speaks to how many people are in need in Cuyahoga County, how many people we have served, and the nature of the issue going forward. When you talk about the department and how we look to the future, and looking at the chairman's questions that he asked to be answered, and the way that we also wanted to present, we think in terms of what it is that we need to do to execute our responsibilities well. And the overwhelming data and the numbers I presented, maybe there are times when it might be hard to assess exactly how well you're doing, but I wanted to make clear that the Department of Human Services going forward, we are focused on priorities that are very similar to what the county executive has articulated. That is making government work, and that's really the main one for us. So when we look forward in the department and talk about the things that we're going to do, we look at primarily a couple of things. Customer service, resident service, how do we serve people? What's the experience like, from the most micro level to the broader level? When you come in the door? When you call us on the phone? How does it work? What's your experience like? And I know our leadership in those agencies is extremely focused on that as a priority. And it's a lot of talk, it's a nice thing to say, but we have to have systems in place that make that work and actually measure that, and be sure that we are making those services work as much as possible. Second thing we're focused on is contract management. We have, as you probably know, many, many multimillion-dollar contracts throughout the human service area where agencies do great work for us. But we, as a county, as a department, must make sure we are measuring this progress appropriately and providing very good feedback to our contractors as well. This is what success means by having this contract, this is what we expect, and we intend to do a much better job with that going forward, not only on the management side, but on the outcome side. It's an extremely important part of our operations. We expect that the county's new innovation office, which will have heavy metrics focus, will be very beneficial to us. I think the previous administration has laid a foundation for measurement through county stat. We expect to take that much further and have a very good system for not just measuring customer service quality, but measuring our contractual success as well. The last thing I'll mention for the department is how we coordinate our services among us, among our agencies. And that's something our leadership, the leadership of the agencies can talk about more when they come up, but of course, the county executives talked about the no wrong door process. And I think you probably know, you may know, that we have a very specific example of that at the Payne Avenue building, between the two operations in the building. at the Payne Avenue building, that between the two operations in the building, the Public Works Office is at work attempting to address that physical barrier that exists between the two. One of the literally literal examples of a no-wrong-door solution. But that's just one sort of symbol. We want to talk about coordination. We want to present our ideas to you about how we're going to do that. We've had some discussions about our shared services approach for the agencies, and that's a key part of our work. Executive has said it many times. We feel strongly about it as well. How do we create that kind of environment for people coming in the door, or calling us on the phone, or interacting with us wherever they may do that? I would be happy to talk about the Office of Human Services budget, get into the details, and specifically answer the chairman's questions about whether we have new initiatives, or whether we're reducing programs, et cetera. You have that two-pager in the binder that shows you that, that answers those. I'd be happy to go into more detail on that. But I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but we do have greater detail if you need it. That really concludes my remarks. Again, if you want to hear from our other leadership now, we're welcome to do that, or we can proceed as you choose.
Thank you very much. So right now, we'll open up for general questions to Health and Human Services. If we could keep these comments outside, to the comments or questions outside of the areas that we're going to hear directors speak. So if there are other questions, I'll entertain them. Mr. Schran?
Mr. Carroll, you indicated that one of the big improvements, and you heard from members of the public looking at cuts, was going to come in the form of the Innovation Services. Can you define what that means so that, I mean, to me, in one vein, innovation means new products and new processes. For us within this sector, I assume it's going to delve in how we deliver our services, how we can deliver more efficiently, more effectively, at a reduced cost, which should ultimately help everybody in regards to it. So could you tell us what that means and where the dollar savings are going to come from?
Sure. I think there's three things I would point to, Councilman. One is the ERP system that's been discussed. That's kind of its own animal, I think, as you know. But that's going to be coordinated through the Office of Innovation. That'll be, that has its own budget, of course, its own process, but that'll be a key part of how that works. That should improve the systems that serve many of the agencies in the county. The second thing I would mention is a more detailed, what they would call, operational efficiency approach. When I worked in Human Services in the late '90s, there was an organization called AT Hudson, which I'm sure Jim and a few others may sound familiar to. What they did is a very detailed analysis of individual units. So they go to a work unit, they look at the work that's there, they look at the employees, they figure out if it's the right number of employees, what the processes look like, and can it be done better, more efficiently using technology, whatever. That's the kind of notion of this efficiency operation, is to look at county operations, look at systems, look at the algorithms or the charts, the steps that it takes to do something, and see what can be eliminated, what can be improved, where the efficiencies lie. So that's a second point in the Innovation Office. Third, as I mentioned, is a more robust metrics strategy. Again, having departments base their operations on these outcomes, not just having some general ideas, but that you measure yourself by data, what gets measured gets done, and that it's a true, it's your true identity. These measurements are what makes you successful or not successful as a department. But Executive, Chief Staff, is very focused on the metrics operation and the system, and having something in place that truly transforms how county works for people. So those are really, I think, the main parts of the Innovation Office, and you'll hear more about that, I think, as you go through this process.
Just as a follow-up, so those three points, I assume that you've assigned a number and a dollar valuation that transfers through this budget for the ERP, for the operational efficiency, and for these metrics. Will those be alluded to as we go through and say that we've identified X amount of dollars that's going to be saved through the ERP installation, and so on and so forth?
I believe so. There are definitely amounts that are discussed for spending. On the savings side, I think that has to be articulated. I don't know exactly how much work has been done on that yet. But that's going to be part of the discussion. When we do a contract for efficiency, that'll be part of the expectation, is that we can identify savings. Through the ERP process that's heavily underway, there may be data that somebody can pull forward and say, this is what we expect to save. But they may be far enough, or may not be far enough, to state that at this time. But certainly, we can tell you what we want to spend. I think a million or so dollars that have been put in the Innovation Office in the budget, we can talk about, I'm sure somebody can talk more about the details with that. But we'll have to let you know about the savings and what the expectations are there.
Well, the savings are what's going to translate to these cuts, I assume. So if we can't identify those with the dollars and cents today before we put the budget in place, how are we going to rely on that? Because, I mean, this ERP probably will not go live, and my best guess would be for two or three years. Is that...
I don't know if it's quite that long, Councilman. I think it's within, maybe that's the outside range. I think it's expected to maybe start a little bit more quickly than that, but better people will talk about that than I.
Start, finish. Those are not...
Right.
I understand the start. It's the finish of when it goes into effect and when it starts to reap those savings to which this year is being affected in the cuts, not three years when the effectiveness of any system would take place. I agree it will be effective if done correctly. I also agree that we probably won't see those dollar savings for two or three years.
My guess would be, Councilman, and I haven't been directly involved, but my guess is that when a contractor is chosen, that person is going to be able to articulate what savings could be anticipated. And whether they can do that right this minute, I'd have to find out.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, first, a question to the chair. Are we going to have access to all the comments from the various directors? Are they available in electronic or written form?
Sure. We have not asked for that in advance of the meeting, but we will ask any written or prepared statements, that the presenters submit them to the clerk for distribution to council.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, to the administration and my colleagues, I have two broad-level concerns that I'd like to express, and the director may take them as comments or respond as he chooses. But the first one, and before I get into these, I first want to say thank you to the administration for including funding for the ID Collaborative and the Hearing and Speech Center, which were important initiatives for me and others, which are in the director's office budget. But my first large-scale concern is that the proposed budget moves $13.4 million per year in spending items that were previously paid for by the general fund into the Health and Human Services levy. Over the course of the biennium, this creates a $26.8 million reduction in Health and Human Services capacity, which, in fact, drives a good portion of the need for the cuts that are in the budget that we're hearing concerns about. And I know the purpose of this is to create general fund capacity, which is needed. But I also add that once these kind of shifts take place, they tend to automatically carry forward from year to year. So this is a semi-permanent reduction in capacity. And so I think it's a very major policy consideration that we have to wrestle with in the budget as to what extent we want to accept that change in allocation. The second concern that I express is...
Excuse me, Mr. Miller. Was there a question or was there a response from the administration that you were seeking?
Directors, if you wish to comment, or just take it as a comment, as you...
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, Councilman, I think each agency individual, the leadership, can speak to how that change affects their agency. I think the idea is to find ways that it wouldn't affect service, wouldn't affect the operations of these divisions, so they can speak to that. I think that'll be relevant to your comments.
And the reason I mention that, I had a question, just to follow up on that. And just so we're aware, through this budget, there are a number of policy changes and initiatives proposed to balance the budget, and this is one of them. Obviously, the Health and Human, the county has a general obligation to provide Health and Human Services. The levy was adopted and passed in order to supplement general fund dollars for Health and Human Service activities. So the intent originally of the levy was to supplement the general fund. Now, the policy change in this budget is that the Health and Human Service Levy Fund will solely support Health and Human Service activities internally. I'm not talking about grants or federal estate assistance. So I just want everybody to be aware of that, of that general policy change in this budget, because that's a major shift.
If I may briefly, Mr. Chairman, the Budget Office could speak better to this, but I think members of council may know, certainly people that have been here longer know, there have been shifts back and forth, that these are believed to be eligible expenses for the levy. In the past, they probably went the other way. So again, the Budget Office can speak to the past a little bit more.
Right. Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, the council president is saying that he would like a comment on this, relevant to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only because it's exactly what the Councilman Miller has raised and you have mentioned. Yes, we're obviously aware that, over the years, this has gone back and forth, and we don't have an opposition to that in and of itself. But I want to read the language of the levy, and all levies in Ohio, for Health and Human Services. It's a resolution declaring the necessity of submitting to the directors of Cuyahoga County the question of a renewed levy, in this case, 4.8 mil, Health and Human Service levy for the purpose of supplementing, supplementing, the general fund appropriations for Health and Human Services. So it is always assumed that the general fund has responsibility, some responsibility, for Health and Human Service delivery. In many counties, there are no levies. In this county, people have been generous, people have more challenges, but they also have risen to those challenges. So I want to, from the beginning, challenge the premise that we are taking money somehow inappropriately, or not appropriately, from the general fund. It is actually just the opposite, that your general fund is supposed to, the levy is supposed to supplement the general fund appropriations. That's what the language says. When people voted for this, that's what the language said.
Since this is a major policy item, and I know that other council members have requested to speak, and not to interrupt Mr. Miller, but I think it's appropriate now, if any member has a comment or question regarding the policy initiative of shifting $13.4 million worth of responsibility solely on the HHS levy fund. If there are any questions relating to that or comments, I'll entertain those at this time. Mr. Jones.
My colleagues have said it very well. If you look across this county, every county has a responsibility for Health and Human Services, 88 counties, and not all of them have a levy, a Health and Human Service levy. They deal with it with their responsibility out of their general fund. So again, that premise that all HHS dollars should be used exclusively for HHS services, that's not the premise that I'm going to start with, as we look at this budget.
I would just point out that the shift that we're talking about is to go to eligible services. There's been a judgment that they fit the category of human service expenditures, so just different kinds of human service expenditures than we are doing just previously. So it's just a different set of choices. I think that's the position.
So again, we have shifted every, there's a recommendation to shift every general fund dollar that is being used for human services back, and shift the burden solely on to the Health and Human Service levy dollars. That is what is being proposed to us.
Well, there are different ways to present it. Again, I think our agencies are able to suggest that if they're able to find savings without hurting services, and again, you can be the judge if you agree, then there are other human service programs that the money can be spent on within the county.
Any other questions on this, or comments on this topic? Okay, very good. Mr. Miller, continue.
The second area that I want to talk about briefly is the need for system-wide strategic planning. And the budget book presented the overall budget of the Health and Human Services as almost exactly $500 million per year, which included the $309 million that you alluded to, plus the two large subsidies, plus some other things. And certainly, an operation of that size could benefit from a strategic planning process. And I am not saying that there needs to be strategic planning money in this budget. There was money appropriated in the last budget, which has not been spent. So I think it should just be carried over and used. And I would have been very happy to initiate this process through you, Mr. Director, but the administration has indicated that they wanted to wait until we get a permanent director in place, and I don't have a problem with that, and I hope that we can move forward on this next year. I do believe that the departmental realignment, plus the three new large initiatives, the early childhood, the infant mortality, and the workforce development together constitutes the beginnings of a Health and Human Services strategic plan, which I believe to be on the right track. But I do think a more comprehensive approach is needed, and I just would cite two examples. Number one is that the Infant Mortality Initiative, which I strongly support and just believe is totally needed, but it is just one of a broad range of HHS disparities by class and race that exists. There's longevity, cancer rates, access to nutritious food, availability and quality of health care, housing, and income, just to name a few. And I think we need to think strategically on how we can address all of them comprehensively. Second, I would just point out, as Councilman Schran has previously alluded to many times, these processes are complex. They involve many agencies, and I think we can bring in the process, improvement processes that we've learned in the business community, which you just alluded to. And I think it's important to bring that in as well. So I do hope that, just as we have a plan for economic development, I think it's equally important that we have some kind of an ongoing, large-scale planning process for Human Services. And it should involve not just county government agencies, but everybody in Cuyahoga County that we partner with.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Comwell.
To the chair, to Mr. Carroll. Just want to go back to the three sections that you talked about for the Innovation Office. I had a couple of questions. I understand the ERP and been following that, but the detailed operational approach, how many staff will be needed for this... will be needed for this department? Or is it going to be some sort of realignment to get this detailed operational approach that you shared with us?
Councilwoman, the Innovation Office, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't have that information here. It's a separate entity. It's not directly connected to human services. It's not part of our budget. So I don't have that exact information. I know generally, the amount of money. I think a couple of FTEs have been connected to it. I don't know for sure. Someone else could answer that question.
But that will be from the, and who will be able to answer that?
I'm not sure when it comes up on the schedule, but we will certainly get that information to you.
And
That's the initiative, the general government section. So we'll hear that next Thursday. And I would envision that the Chief of Staff
He brought it up, so.
Absolutely.
Just wanted to, while I'm fresh on it, and I'm sure our staff is taking notes. And you also mentioned the robust metric strategy. Has there been any thought in who will decide what this metric system is going to look like, and what data needs to be measured? I think council needs to be brought into that. I mean, we have these budget cycles, and we talk about streamlining departments and evaluating on metrics, but we're never really brought into what those metrics are, so we could all be on the same page. So I'd like to see that.
Councilwoman, I know the chair has talked about performance-based budgeting and metrics in budgeting. I think the Chief of Staff, Executive are very open to that discussion. They want to have that discussion. I think there will be a lot of opportunity for input into creating the system and the scheme. So I mean, I think we're going to be open to hearing all of that. I think there is a desire for it to be as robust as possible. Just one brief point, too. We talked about the Innovation Office. I mentioned those kind of detail elements, but I think I would be in trouble if I didn't say that it's really meant to create a culture of innovation in the county. And, you know, when I first heard about it, I hadn't, didn't really know what that meant. But I have really come to see what that means, and the cities that have done it, and I've looked at it a little bit. And it's a whole different approach to how your Duke County government, to getting input from employees, to having, you know, just being open to newness and improvements. I think you'll be interested in how that, what that means when you can hear more detail about it. But it's a totally different way of looking at what you do.
Okay. And just a statement, I guess, on the infant mortality or question initiative. We're talking about putting $500,000 into the infant mortality. God bless the babies. I'm more of an advocate on this council for children and our infants. But in regards to this, have we looked, or has the administration looked at other programs that are already out, that are being successful, and maybe, and they've already established, they've got the startup cost, CEOGC, to be exact, is one of them? Have we looked at those things?
Councilwoman, we have looked. We certainly know of the programs that are working here locally. And like Councilman said the other day, Councilman Kelly, that it could be more coordinated. I know the people involved with this have looked at Cradle Cincinnati, which Cincinnati has a high level of need as well. There's a program in Baltimore called Be More that is focused on infant mortality reduction and other things. Appreciate Councilman Miller's comments, though, about the broader spectrum of issues. But I'd say the answer is yes. I think this council is going to get more detail about what's going to go into that $500,000 potentially. But there, you know, again, it's, I think, Councilman Kelly, the backbone organization, having the coordinated efforts and strategies, that's what you're going to see that money go into.
And just a question on that. Who would oversee that funding?
And that, Councilwoman, that's to be determined. Again, most likely, some outside entity, not affiliated with the governments, that would be the coordinating backbone organization.
Thank you.
Just a comment on infant mortality, the workforce, and the UPK initiatives. We had a discussion with the Executive yesterday. We are waiting, they're nowhere on our agenda are those items currently presented. We are waiting for the administration to present those plans. And at that time, we will insert them in the agenda. But right now, we have no plans to discuss any of those until information from the administration is presented. Mr. Jones?
Your interim status ends on December 31st. There are quite a few ambitious goals for HHS in this budget. Can you speak to the future of this position?
Councilman, I think that's still in the works. There have been some discussions about what might happen in the future. I'm really not in a position to be specific right now. I hope, you know, I think we expect to have a transition and a final, kind of final answer before then. But really, at the moment, we're just moving forward. I, you know, I think we have great leaders at the agencies, and trying to support their work and making their changes as best we can.
Next question. We've talked briefly about the realignment of the departments. As I reflected on your comments yesterday, if we're not discussing a merger, let me just throw out a few observations. We have roughly seven departments and directors, maybe a little more. But each one has ability to draw down dollars from the state. They have a certain brand as a result of that, of having that office. If we're not talking a merger, if there were a merger, obviously, one department would lose that title of office, making it more challenging to draw down dollars. My understanding is that there is some bringing together of back-office support between children and family services and jobs and family services. You said that would help with drawing down state funding. Can you kind of explain that a little bit? How does that, not merger or realignment, cause that to happen?
And, excuse me, not to steal the thunder from the next presenter, but Director Presto, as I understand it, his presentation is going to go into much more depth. But if there are some 50,000-foot visionary perspectives, that would be helpful.
I would mention, too, Mr. Chairman, Walter Parfey Alex is here, who's the Chief Finance Officer for the department, without that title. But he can talk in specific about actually how that reimbursement process works. And maybe I could let him do that under the DCFS presentation.
Then let me rephrase that question a little bit. If there's not a merger, and there is realignment, something that's important is the reporting, if there's any realignments. Speak again to the reporting of each of the departments to the HHS Director, and any intentions that you have there.
Mr. Councilman, to that point and your previous point, I think maybe the best way to describe it, I said shared services the other day. I think a lot of the changes really won't have much of a public impact, or it won't come with a public perception. It'd be internal. I don't know if people now know that the smaller programs do report up to the Director, you know, directly. The program managers, Directors report right to the Director of that office. So most people probably don't know that. And that's not going to change. We'll continue to have that reporting relationship. So, and then, on some of the internal things that I think Tom could talk about more, it's more, you know, right now, there are employees of JFS and of Children and Family that do some of the same work. And maybe they are employees of the department, instead of being specialized employees of the divisions. So it doesn't change the leadership structure, doesn't change the reporting requirement, but just kind of recognizes that they're doing the same work, and there's a way to create efficiencies by having them do it together. So that's some of the concepts. But I guess the main point, it's internal. A lot of it wouldn't involve changes that are, I think, most people would think are significant. But that's sort of the broad outline.
Thank you.
I think. Any other questions? I have a few. Just to piggyback on Mr. Schran's comment regarding the ERP system, are you saying that although the ERP, we haven't even seen the contract, I'm not even sure if a final vendor's been selected, I would guess, based on our agenda and the calendar, we're not going to get to it until next year, anticipating a two- to three-year implementation of the ERP system, at which time we'd fully realize the savings that we anticipate? Are you saying that those savings are, although the ERP system won't be in place, say, until 2018, 2019, are anticipated in this budget?
No, Councilman. And I'm certainly not the knowledgeable person on that, Mr. Chairman. Again, I have to get the answer to you about where and how much the savings are being talked about, if anybody's in a position to articulate that yet. I don't know the answer to that. I know someone else does.
Just, there are some functional areas that are not going to be presenting, but that are under HHS, that I just want to ask some questions. On the Cleveland Rape Crisis Center, we're appropriating $50,000 to them, and the answer we received was so that they're better able to use those monies to pull down additional funds. Do you know what the multiplier is on that?
Mr. Chairman, it's not something that our office or the department was involved with directly.
Something made the request. So evaluating the request, you had to determine.
My understanding, I think the overall grant that they would receive, if they're successful, is somewhere in the $300,000 to $400,000 range. That's my guess. I could be wrong about that. But we'll, you know, we'll get you that information as well.
Okay. If you can get it to the clerk, and the clerk is making notes. So is this $50,000 contingent upon them receiving the grant?
Mr. Chairman, I believe so. I don't think that it comes unless, it's specifically a match, I believe.
Okay. Could you provide, on a policy initiative, the administration, although a small $25,000 item, is this college now employee program? Could you provide a little more insight as to, other than the explanation that we received, what that program entails?
Chairman, again, that, I believe, was added to our budget, not something that we have managed in the past.
Right. It's a new policy initiative.
It would be a, it would really not be a Department of Human Services function, it would be more an education or that area. Again, I'd have to have the right person speak to that directly.
Is that something we should address, maybe with Mr. Triasi, who operationally oversees HR, fiscal, and IT? Is that a better direction?
I'll get advice on that. I mean, I'm guessing that Ken Serat would be the best person to speak to it. So maybe in development, or however council wants to do it. We can get anybody to come up to answer the question today, if you like, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Would it be appropriate to ask a question regarding the college savings account to you, or who should I direct that question to?
I believe that's the same answer.
Okay. The Ohio State Extension Service, they've received a 10% cut in their budget. It's been brought to our attention that they were not notified of the reduction, nor did they recommend it. Or can you provide some insight as to what that cut is, and how that's going to impact the delivery of their services?
Mr. Chairman, we have that contract, I believe, in the Family and Children First Council, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if you have it listed there as your, under your budget for this office.
Does not. So would you like me to defer that question?
If you could. Robin Martin is in a position to talk about that contract and the details.
Let me just. I believe those are all the questions that I have. Once again, any other questions or comments? Ms. Conwell?
Through the chair. Looking at, there is also listed a reduction of $101,000 for the realignment of one FTE to the Communication Department. So you're realigning one staff to the Communication Department. Where is that staff coming from? Which department is it coming from?
Councilwoman, that's one of the reductions in the FTE number for 2016. That's one of the two. You see it go from seven to five, or eight to five. That's one of the ones, one of the reduction ones. So that's just out of our, out of the Office of Human Services budget.
But it says to Communication Department.
So it becomes a Communications Area FTE. That's where that will be.
So we're actually keeping the employee, we're just...
We moved, I believe we moved the FTE to Communications.
Okay. And so, how much was their salary currently?
I believe it was $75,000 range, approximately.
Okay. So I'm not understanding where the $101 figure came from. Maybe it's too early for me.
It may have been budgeted at a higher amount. I'm not sure.
That includes their benefits and things of that nature?
That's what the salary was before, I know, the number I said. But yes, Councilman, that's right.
That would be on a fully loaded basis. Benefits over at allocation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Jones?
Out in the public domain is the idea that the recommended budget has 10% cuts across the, across the Health and Human Services, well, and county budget in general. But in reality, some departments have taken deeper cuts than 10%, and some departments have made no cuts, actually. Is that a fair characterization?
Yes, Councilman, that's right.
Okay. What department had the largest cuts?
Within human services, one of the programs had, for the moment, for what's been presented, a very large cut in a contractual line item. And that was actually Family and Children First. That's the one I recall. What, when we get to that point, I figure you and others would have questions. We would like to, what we want to look at is ways that maybe those kind of, that kind of burden can be shared. You know, as you note, there have been other cases where the reductions were able to be eliminated. We're going to look at how we can try to make that fair as part of the budget process, if, of course, that's the council's desire. But, yeah, that did, there were a few cases where there was a higher number in one place. Now, some cases, certainly, those are justified. The differences are justified. But we, you know, we're open to looking at ways to try to modify that.
What departments actually had no cuts?
In the end, I believe some of the other programs, you'll hear from people today, the Senior Adult Services had reductions that were restored, as well as the Office of Homeless Services. And those are the ones that I'm familiar with.
Thank you.
Ms. Conwell had a follow-up?
Follow-up through the chair to Mr. Carroll. Every department was asked to be cut 10%. Can you state before us that fairly, that the Office of HHS was given a 10% cut? Because some of these look like they're reductions out of your budget, but they've been moved over to others. So can you give us a fair assessment that you really cut your department 10%?
Councilwoman, if you look at the numbers, it does not reflect a 10% reduction, mostly because of the items that have been added. If you look on your two-page document there, obviously, the infant mortality increase, and the couple of other things that have been added to this office. This office has really, it's a budgetary, sort of, has a budgetary kind of identity. It's one of the things we've talked about in our consolidation, is whether it should exist the way it is now, as sort of, under the name that it has. But again, different contracts have been added to this budget, just in a general sense. And you're, you know, you're just right, it doesn't reflect the reduction.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Mr. Gallagher?
Just one quick question. As we go through your portion of the budget, and we see programs that we know and have factual backup that they work and have been cut, what's your position going to be about that?
Councilman, we've talked a lot about that. I think we are presenting an executive's budget. We've been through a lot of discussions about how we got here, the kind of reductions we had to make. I think we were all, had a very wide-ranging discussion about it. If there are interests by council for programs, I would say we would be happy to be resources for it. Give our, you know, give our sense of the details and help to develop if it comes forward. But I think that's a conversation between council and administration to move forward. I think when you ask individual leaders who come up here, I think, again, they're working with the budget that's been presented. They, I'm sure, have ideas about things that could be done differently. But I think they're going to defer to the administration to have that conversation with council directly.
The overall concern that I have going forward, it was about 10 years ago, and have been an employee of the county. The county was in financial stress, and there was a straight, strict, straight across-the-board cut of 10%. Everybody did it. Not some, everybody did. Now, I don't know if you were here, you remember that. But I do. And we did it because we had rational reasons to do it. People were going to lose their jobs, and services were going to be cut. I was surprised that we got to do the 10% across the board, everybody, without anyone losing their job, and services certainly not being cut, but stretched a bit. As we go through this, I'm going to look for the rational reason as to the 10% cut here. And I can tell you, just on the surface, I'm not seeing it. So I'm willing to be open-minded about this. But as we go through, there's going to be some tough questions. So good luck.
And Councilman, I think people are ready to try to answer that question, that major question.
Mr. Schran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a similar vein, the ERP is going to be transformational as far as how we run the government here, two to three years. We have not identified the We have not identified the operational efficiencies, it sounds like, as a result of this concept of the innovative services. It is therefore not driven, the metrics to which you can then rely upon those operational efficiencies, to then have that in place. I hope that we've got someplace where we have best practices that we're going to lay those metrics against. Do you know if we do?
We, I know from the foundation that's been set, we have done a lot of that. I'm sure the new metrics, the approach to metrics, will expand that. But we spent a lot of time in the county stat process doing that, seeking out best practices, looking at other partners and, you know, other peers across the country. So...
And we have those, could you present those to us and share the best practices, which, that at least gives me a sense that you have a target now?
I mean, a lot of that legwork has been done.
Target, to me, is a goal or an objective, that those best practices and those operational efficiencies are going to start to yield. So at least it tells me that we're here, and then we can measure where we currently are against that best practice. So could you provide those best practices that you've identified within the Health and Human Services area? Because then it tells me, at least, we know that we've got an objective. Getting back to my military, there's a hill, and we're going to take it, and here's the goal, we're going to go for. So provide us with those best practices, with each one of these, because it gets back to Mr. Gallagher's, I kind of go methodically, because then that's going to yield the cuts that you're talking about, hopefully, at least, so we can identify the rationale. Best practice, where our metrics are, what our goal is.
Councilman, I know we can be responsive to your question. I don't know if it's in the exact form, the way you described it, but we can certainly provide what we have.
I'll take the form you have, and then I'll challenge if it's not acceptable, and if it is, then we'll build upon that.
And we recognize we need to do, need to do more, so, but we can share with you what we have.
Because then that yields all kinds of other things, like how are you going to train the workforce to get to those best practices, and what are you doing to build those people there? That, to me, is back to a little bit of Mr. Miller's concept of how you do strategically an analysis of where we are. Because my last question, then, is, if we don't have the ERP to do our operational, we don't have the operational efficiencies identified, the metrics are still out there, we have not compared them, how can we determine that a flat 10% is the correct number? And I'll ask you right now, is that the correct number that we should have started this process with?
Councilman, the way I answer that way, think about that question, is individual agencies making that choice, making those reductions? And can they explain?
Excuse me, let me cut you off. That is what they determined after you gave them the goal. How did we get to that goal if we didn't do any of these other steps to get there?
Well, again, we're working with the information we have today, and they were able to get to those goals through various means, various strategy. And you'll hear, you'll hear what their rationale is and whether that's acceptable. But we have the data that we have today, and we had to base our choices on that.
Why wasn't it 12%? Why wasn't it 15%? Why wasn't it 7%? I guess that's all I'm trying to get to, is with what you know, and what you've based your, what you're telling us to this point, where did that number come from as a rational basis? Not, can you achieve it, but is that the operational, I mean, we're talking about policy right here. And this is, you started this whole assumption with that policy.
And the broader decision about the budget came from, not directly, of course, from our department. There is a person in a better position to talk about that rationale, but it's based on probably a lot of factors, and, you know, we have our areas and our agencies that we're able to come up with the savings from, based on the data that we have available.
Let me summarize Mr. Schron's request. Obviously, county stat, by the way, who's heading up county stat right now? Jennifer Schofield?
It's working through the IT office.
So she is still...
Jennifer, no, Jennifer's not with the county, but it's working through IT.
Is there an individual?
I don't know who is working under Michael as in charge of it, but that's where it had to have been moved to.
Okay, if we can find that, that'd be helpful. And to Mr. Schron's point, if I'm interpreting, and not to speak for him, but I believe what he's asking for is what raw data was used to determine what programs in Health and Human Services were reduced?
Well, again, I think we have recognized, to both of you, Councilmen, we've recognized that we want to improve our data collection and our use of data and what we have on the metrics area. We, you know, Councilman Schron, I think you're asking for something that we're kind of acknowledging doesn't exist yet. We don't have a performance-based budgeting scheme, and that's what we're, I think, in some ways, part of this metrics program will look towards creating that. But, you know, Councilman Schron, you asked, what data did you base this on? Well, we based it on our operations, and we're, you know, again, the strategy for the budget was set among, you know, a variety of different parts of the administration. We based our individual strategies, maybe not on the data that you were hoping that exists. We based it on the rationale that we have, that we will, you know, our individual agencies can explain. So I'm not, you know, I don't think we're on a different page. We only have the data available. The data, I think, that will come from these improvements and innovation will allow us to make better decisions, will allow us to be in a different place. But we obviously worked within our status quo to complete our, you know, our work for this process.
And let me give, I can give an example of a request. So there's a $2.2 million reduction in Tapestry Care, Tapestry System of Care, okay? And it says, the reduction was based due to a new service model. So I, you know, so what new service model? We'll get to that, we'll get to Children and Family, kind of tip our hand to the next round of questions, but, and it does not need to be responded, because I don't think you're going to be able to provide a response, based on what I'm hearing. But the question is, at some point, a decision was made to reduce that specific item by $2.2 million, based on a new service delivery model. And I guess what, I'm not guessing, the question, as I understand it from Mr. Schron, is, and I'm sure it's shared by others of council, what basis, what data was used to make the determination to reduce the Tapestry System of Care for family and youth by $2.2 million?
So, in a general sense, Councilman, I know you'll get to that more specifically, but we can only use the rationale and the data that we have available. And if, you know, the agency administrator's going to come up and describe his rationale, and the new system and the new model, he'll be able to provide the information he has. I think Tom would be the first person to say, he's seen data management and data and metric schemes and other entities in state Nebraska and other parts of the country, and I think he has identified a lot of need to improve in that area in his, you know, his agency. So I think you're going to hear, we're not, you know, we'll express to you what we have and what we don't have. I don't think we're trying to say that we have a, you know, developed model. You know, if we don't, we're going to, we're going to explain to you exactly how we got to these points, and the council, of course, can agree or disagree as to whether it's justified or not, based on the information we have.
But in the absence of data, making some of these decisions, then it's a leap of faith that we're going to achieve these objectives, if that's what...
Councilman, but there are data, and we have the data that we...
That's what we're asking for. We're just saying, give it to us.
Sure. And we'll do our, we'll do our best to answer those questions, but, you know, again, we have the data that we have, so...
Well, let me ask you, so today's Thursday, the 22nd, can we have it by next Thursday?
For individual question, individual agencies, or? Sure, I mean, I think today you'll obviously get a sense of answers to those kinds of questions, and we'll provide whatever we have to try to, you know, try to fill in the gaps if they exist.
Because we have, we have three days, two and a half days scheduled for council to deliberate on this budget. Any data you can give us to support the positions of the reductions, as an example, or the increases, would be beneficial to us ultimately making, amending the budget.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with Tapestry, for example, again, you'll hear the answer today, and you'll be able to, you'll be able to dig into what that means, how he came to that decision, et cetera, and, you know, what...
I just use that as an example.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? I've sparked some discussion. So Mr. Gallagher, then Mr. Schron.
The questions that we're asking are important. I think this is a council that's very engaged, and we weren't, I didn't think anybody thought we would be. And the reason that we're giving, we're asking you these questions on the rationale is because as I look through here, and I met with some of these department heads, and there is an organization within the county whose filings have gone down anywhere between 20% and 25% over the past four years. And I think you know who I'm talking about, and if you don't, you should. Or maybe you shouldn't, but the administration should. And their cuts I'm looking at are barely 2% this year and next. I've told them I'm going to ask the question, and I'm going to want answers. If your filings, which you, that's your lifeblood, your filings go down a quarter percent, and your cuts too, we got problems. Or there's some really good answers, and I can't wait. So there's some inconsistencies here, and we found those. And if there are answers, I'd like to know them, because we answer to the public and the taxpayers, and we also answer to those programs that work that got cut. And I'm going to keep saying that. So, good luck.
Understood.
Mr. Schron.
Yeah, and just, Carroll, I don't mean to be harping on this, but you keep going down to the micro and saying, this is what they could justify at their end. Somebody had to start here to ask the question, to come down, to make these cuts that are going to ripple through to every one of these groups that are here in the audience. I want the rationale and the basis and the metrics and the best practices at start at the macro level, not the micro level.
Understood.
Not the, the micro level, I'm sure everybody's going to do their best job to carry out, they're going to be good soldiers, and they're going to carry out whatever is presented to them. But the reality of it is, is what started the process, and where is that rationale? Where are the metrics? Where is all this foundational material to even start the conversation?
And, Councilman, I'm at the micro level today, so, I mean, there are others that can, that can speak to that, I believe.
Well, I just, only because you are the titular head at this point in time, you're at the macro level, whether you like it or not, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Obviously, you can tell by the questions coming across this council, and the passion that this council has, and not saying the administration doesn't, but we embrace and understand the challenges, but we also understand the responsibility this county has in Health and Human Services. So we want to make sure that we evaluate and appropriate the dollars, so they impact the most amount of people and use dollars effectively. But we don't want to shortchange some of our community who very well may need services. So that's, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I believe that's the objective as to what you're hearing from us here this morning. So, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. I appreciate your time here today. Next up on the agenda is Children and Family Services, Director Presto.
Good morning, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, members of the council. My name is Thomas Presto, and I'm the Director of Children and Family Services, and I am very happy to be here today to talk about our budget. Our mission, as you're aware, is that our children are safe, and those abused and neglected children are protected, and that we provide permanency for those children in our care. This budget that you have reflects our ongoing strategic effort to meet the needs of our county's most vulnerable children and their families in ways that are accessible, proactive, and responsive. We want to make sure that our children and families are better off because the programs we deliver and our staff that work with them have been a positive presence in their life. So how do we do this? We do this by committing considerable resources to service and programs that are designed to provide permanency and to keep our children safe, and also by having a very dedicated staff that's on call 24/7 to respond to the calls of abuse and neglect in our county. To that end, we are designing a model to measure three things. How much did we do? How well did we do it? And is anyone better off? We have to know that what we're doing is actually making a difference in the lives of these children and families across our county. Upon my arrival at the department, I encountered 180 different committees and initiatives that were going on at the same time. Also, when we looked at our federal benchmarks on how we're rated across with the federal government, our compliance rate was only 33%. Since that time, our leadership and our staff have pared down those committees and initiatives to 60. And in the upcoming, in the next two weeks, next two to three weeks, we will be developing, we will be implementing a back-to-basics model that refocuses our efforts on safety, permanency, and well-being, so that we will hit our indicators and benchmarks at our federal level in a much better rate. This back-to-basics model that we are implementing in two to three weeks was designed by all levels of the agency. We needed to critically rethink old procedures and old policies so that we can move forward with comprehensive child welfare services. Additionally, next week, a week after next, we'll be implementing a new structure at CFS, Children and Family Services, that will help us deliver better and more holistic services, be more efficient, track our outcomes, and be more accountable. I do have a org chart that I can hand out to you folks at the end of my presentation, if you'd like to see what our new internal structure will look like. We will provide cost-effective services without losing the quality of care our children and families need. We're going to be doing this in a number of different ways. One, by rightsizing our contracts. We're going to be making adjustments in our payment structure for many of our contracted providers, that we believe we can better align our budget to actual services provided. Now, given the example of that, what we're going to be doing in the upcoming months, we pay our providers in two different ways, administrative costs, administrative rate, and a service rate. And when you look at the 156 contracts that I'm responsible for in the agency, the rate that the providers set ranged from 7% to 65%. And what I want to be, what I'm going to be doing in the upcoming months is getting a group of providers together to readjust those rates so that their, that disparity is not so broad. Tapestry was mentioned a few moments ago. As you know, in your budget book, there's a $2 million decrease in that budget, in that line item. And this Tapestry program is a highly effective program for wraparound services for high-end needs children, no doubt about it. My staff and I and the providers are absolutely supportive of this program. But when you looked at the data for the past six years on the Tapestry program, the referral pattern was consistently decreasing. Also, when you look at how we are going to, there's a new RFP out with the Tapestry program that's actually in play right now, we've changed our payment structure to the Tapestry program so that we will be all on a per diem rate instead of a flat cost. Those two items, I am absolutely confident that we will be able to balance the Tapestry budget and not reduce any services for that program. Recently, also, we started a collaboration with the Adams Board. We're pulling together teams from both the Adams Board and CFS to look at how we can triage children coming into care that have, for decades, been coming into Children and Family Services care for reasons other than safety, primarily substance abuse or mental health. We are in the middle of developing that program now, and we hope to implement as quickly as possible. Internally, in the department, in the next month, we're going to be conducting a why-staff-stay survey. We want to understand how to improve staff retention, and we are laser-focused on creating a healthy culture that includes a kind and professional work environment. Our staff diligently work to protect the life and health and safety of our children. Our staff are our most valuable asset, and we want to support them as best we can as they support and protect the children and families of this county. In closing, all these efforts that we're talking about today and that we're doing at the department revolve around five value statements that we adhere to in my department. One, staff are supported and have a say in how they do their job. Two, we deliver the best service in the country. Three, we pay our bills on time and come in on budget. Four, we have programs that work and we know why they work. And five, most importantly, we treat each other with compassion, respect, and kindness. That's the end of my prepared statement. I would like to take any questions.
Great, and if you wouldn't mind leaving a copy of your prepared statement with the clerk.
I don't have that quite, I will have that, I wasn't prepared to do that. I have my notes all over this. I will give a clean copy to you by noon today, sir.
Great, thank you. Just to the clerk will be fine. Questions? Mr. Brady.
Thank you. So from what I gather, you were asked, as others were, to see if you could reduce your costs by 10%? And you said yes?
I said that I wanted to review all our program protocols, and I would come up with a budget that would fit in with the executive. Actually, we didn't cut 10%, we cut 5.3.
Okay, so you didn't cut 10%, you cut 5.3, and you believe you can do that without services suffering across the board?
That's absolutely correct, sir. Based on the amount of kids we... Based on the amount of kids we have in care right now and the projections over the past few years moving forward, we believe that we'll be able to handle any child coming into care of this by any, based on the budget that we have.
One more question from me right now, Mr. Chairman. You had mentioned a collaboration with the Adams Board, with Tapestry and the Adams Board. The Adams Board has also been asked to cut its budget by millions of dollars. Does that in any way affect your collaboration with them?
I am very happy to be working with Mr. Denahan and the Adams Board to try to look at our system of care and our service away across this county, and working with the Adams Board will benefit both us and them, both in savings and outcomes to our families, our children and families.
Well, only if they can continue to be provided the resources they need to work with you.
We are looking at, we have about 240 children that we are working with their team and our team to see how we can safely step down these children in a way that we can assist the Adams Board in making a process so that their budget can work for them. This is a tremendous...
How far, and I'll, excuse me for one follow-up, how far along are you in that process?
They're meeting this week or early next on it, the review of the cases. Our transition teams are doing that now.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, Director, I'm going to leave the specific questioning to others, but I just wanted to say that I've paid very close attention to your efforts to instill positive values, to believe in your staff, to work through kindness and respect rather than heavy-handed, top-down approaches. I think it's really positive, and I follow your comments every week and just wish you the very best of success and believe that you're really providing a very exemplary form of leadership.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Jones.
Tom, I want to get a better understanding of the collaboration you mentioned with the Adams Board. And I'm going to ask you to help me with the numbers as we, you know, as we go through this book. We've had it for a few days now, but I still need a little help with the numbers. But here's my questioning. With the Adams Board, or with your department, I believe you have roughly $7 to $8 million that we would be shifting the responsibility to the Adams Board for our children who have challenges? And help me with that.
We're not looking to shift dollars to the Adams Board at all. What we're looking to do is, at the front end of the, two things. At the front end of the system, we want to be able to divert those children who don't necessarily have to come into care for reasons other than safety and help the Adams Board identify that with our staff so that Medicaid can be used in order to treat those children so that we don't have to pay board and care because they're not in crisis for child abuse and neglect. That's a selection of kids that, we're going to set up a triage team with the Adams Board. They've been extraordinarily helpful in being proactive with this process with us. On the back end of our system, we are looking at a large number of children that have been in care for a number of years, that are in paid placement, that are in care only for the reason of mental health or substance abuse. But we're paying the board and care for. So, there's a portion of those kids that have been in care for a while that we're looking to step down safely, if we can, so that the Adams Board can take, through the Medicaid payments, take their treatment and that we wouldn't have to pay the board and care. So, there's a collaboration that we're going to experience that we haven't done before to this extent.
Got you. Let me give it back to you. The children that we have in board and care that we provide treatment for, the collaboration, the recommendation is that that treatment is provided by the Adams Board, and we would not have to take the board, we would not have the board and care costs that we've had in the past.
Yes.
Okay.
Not all of them, but there's a portion of those kids.
Does that board and care cost come to roughly $7 million, $8 million?
It depends on how many of those kids we can safely return home. We're in the middle of looking at that as we speak. My staff or, my staff and Mr. Denahan's staff are in the middle of reviewing those records together to see what that amount would be. We don't know yet. That's why, I'm assuming that's why Mr. Denahan had asked for an extension and not presented today, so we have that time to work on that process.
And I'll just share with you my experience over the last four or five years. We've had presenters, we've had families who have come in, who have praised the county for assistance with their children. There are some who had to have their child in out-of-state care, and they simply said, "I couldn't handle my child at that time. The help you provided was instrumental. We are reunited family once again." We've had those type of presentations over and over. So, are these the type of children that would be shifted from our board and care to the Adams Board?
Yes. If, we've had a number of examples where we have a family that is willing to work with their child but don't have the, don't have the wraparound services that Medicaid can provide so that we bring them into care, have their board and care be paid for by us, they go off to a placement. We're trying to avoid this, we don't further traumatize a child unnecessarily coming into care. I don't know, we don't know what the new folk, new children coming in is going to look like, how many? And we're looking at the large number of children that we currently have in state, in care right now so that we can step them down safely when appropriate, so that we can adjust the Adams Board's dollar amount so that not only can these kids return home safely, but they don't have to be in care, being unduly traumatized for reasons other than safety.
Have you had a conversation with the Adams Board yet and heard their thoughts and recommendations in terms of this collaboration? Because again, I'm hearing, I'm using my term until my thoughts are being elevated, that there's a shifting of the responsibility that the county has had to the Adams Board. And I'm still trying to wrap my mind around that and what that really means.
We're not looking to shift costs. These are our kids, collectively our kids. We're trying to find the best way to provide service to them so they don't come into care so we don't, if they don't need to come into county care, they shouldn't. So, we're trying to, we're trying to work out a process, a pilot program to make that happen. There's not a cost shifting here, but we're trying to find a better way to work with the Adams Board than we ever have before. And not only with the Adams Board, but with DD and other organizations so that we can look at these as our kids and not the county's kids or mental health kids or et cetera. These are all our children that we should be looking at as a way to find resources to make them safe and healthy.
Last question. When will you actually meet with them to determine, to find out their thoughts on this collaboration?
Well, we have met numerous times already, my staff and Mr. Denahan and the executive. We've had two meetings already, the transition, or the teams reviewing the records from both the Adams Board and CFS are meeting either this week or early next, and then we'll have a subsequent meeting thereafter, once we get the data from those record reviews to see where we actually are. It will be prior to Mr. Denahan's presentation here.
What has been the Adams Board's comments on this collaboration to this?
They've been very supportive, and I couldn't ask for a more positive partner in this.
Thank you.
Mr. Schron.
And it was refreshing to hear how your analysis on the tapestry and yielded the $2 million that's reflected in the budget. So, can I assume that by moving away from the annual contracts and moving to the per diem, is which, am I correctly understanding this?
Yes, sir.
The concept. So, someplace along the way, you now have done, the analysis says hours times per diem rate equals that savings. Is that...
That's correct, based on utilization, decreased utilization over the years, and also on what we were doing. And I'm not, the way the contracts were designed earlier is that portion of the contracts were, full contract amounts were given divided by 12. So, an organization would see two kids and get the same amount, whether they saw two kids or 52 kids. So, that wasn't a real efficient way to kind of, especially when you're talking about performance outcomes-based budgeting, it's not the most healthiest way to do things. So, we're not trying to hurt any of the collaboratives or any of the providers at any level. We are working with them. I meet with them monthly. I have a director steering committee that meets with providers, the alliance and the collaboratives that we, actually, we're meeting today at 1:00 if we're done in time. And we discuss these things, and we're open about it.
Okay. And so, when you went to the vendor and said, "We're going to a per diem rate," did they come back and say, "We're going to have to have minimums, though?" Because at some point, if I've gone from an annual billing and I'm going to go to a per diem, and you're telling me that it was two kids and they were actually getting the benefit of a higher rate, are they going to still be a service provider in the future? Because you've cut their flow of money. And it's taxpayers' money, so if they're not entitled, that's one thing. But if that was a reliable source that somebody else within the county is depending upon also that serves as provider, we ought to be able, I loved the fact that you have five value statements, not just paying them on time, but making sure they're still in business and all the other things are critical to that third bullet, I think, on your value statement. Have you done that analysis as far as...
Yes, sir. To be fair, there are some collaboratives that are nervous about the per diem rate because it may impact their operations. Councilman Jones and I, along with providers and collaborative folks, have met on one occasion, I met probably with Councilman Jones, to talk about this process and where we are and why we got here and what we wanted to move forward. To be fair to the collaboratives and the other organizations, is there complete 100% backing of this process? We're right in the middle of it, and I'd say not, it's probably not 100% backed. But I would say that they're all willing to give it a fair shot and see where we go through this. The position of the department is that we are not trying to hurt any collaborative or any provider. We want to make sure that we have the right services going to these children and families and making sure that we can have the outcomes that make for a healthy environment. That's the end game on this process for us. We're just, we're adjusting. I don't know how it's going to, we have a 2016 budget adjustment in, next year at this time. We will run, this contract will be in place in January or February at the latest. We will run it for seven or eight months, we'll get our data, and we'll adjust as necessary.
So, the vendors are locking down their per diem rate for what period of time?
I think the RFP, I'm not quite sure. I think the RFP is a two-year or a three-year RFP that's coming out. I can't be certain, sir.
So, they are, we are utilizing the two-year proviso, because when I talk to vendors, they can really, can reduce their costs if we don't go out to them every year and ask them for a new RFP and have to bid it, because that's an expensive process.
Right. It will be at least a two-year, if not three, sir. And look, when we get in the middle of this, if we need to make some adjustments, we'll make an amendment.
Okay.
We'll go through and go through an amendment process.
I would be, I'd like to again, see the detail as to how your dollars times hours times all that came up to yield $2 million, that would be, that should be a very simple mathematical thing that we can, everybody should be able to follow and see that flow.
And if you can get that information to the clerk.
I will do that as soon as possible, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
That comes through with every one of these other areas, and they can support it by actual data points? That's what I think this council is looking for.
We have a long, just if I may interject, we have, yes, we're doing everything we can in order to reinforce our decisions by data. We are looking, as some of you heard the other day, that we need to have a more strategic protocol and process on more outcome-based budgeting and how do we know that our programs are working? That's, you know, Matt Carroll talked about in the coming year, that we want to make that a, we are making that a priority. So, we're all for that, to make that better than what it is now.
Yeah, it warms my fiscal heart that you're talking about outcome-based budgeting, so I appreciate that. Ms. Conwell, then Mr. Hairston.
If I could comment just on that.
On my fiscal heart?
No, no, it's too cold to touch. I won't. Just joking. No, but to the tapestry, it certainly has been effective, and everyone has, as a director, you have the opportunity to try to be more fiscally responsible. But I need to just throw out there, those providers on the ground, the university settlements, I shouldn't even start naming because I need to name everyone, but they do the hard work on the ground. And they do that with people giving little, sometimes little regard to the cost of staffing levels that they need to actually do that work. So, I just wanted to throw out there the importance of what they do. And again, all of those eight network providers that are doing this critical work, and we certainly want to watch the outcomes so that we are getting outcomes. So, thank you.
Mr. Councilman, I also, just to reiterate your point, I am a big supporter of the collaboratives. In fact, I've visited, I think, almost all, I think there's one or two left that I haven't visited personally yet since I've been here in six months. We want to find a way to make this work, but I also have a fiscal responsibility to make sure that it's done the most efficient way. And again, I'll restate my premise, we're not looking to take away operations, and we're not looking to take away FTEs. We're trying to find a way to make this work so that we can meet the needs of not only the kids and families, but also the operational needs of these collaborators. They are a phenomenal support to the Children and Family Service among other community, with their communities in the county. There's only one other state that I've seen that had this type of collaboration, it was phenomenal.
And we'll all watch this together.
Okay. Ms. Conwell.
Thank you. To the chair, to Director Prisco, on the collaboration point, are you also working with them in terms of all the paperwork and all that extra stuff that comes with it? I've heard a lot of complaints as I've visited the different collaboratives about the different funding streams that are coming in. So, are they addressing that with your group?
Short-term, yes. In the longer term, we want to have it more automated than what we have right now. We're looking at a new web, cloud-based system so that we can have a better, easier user face, what do they call it, user interface with the collaboratives and how they do their paperwork. So, it's not going to happen in the next six months. We're trying to work with the IT department to make that play out in the strategic plan. Mr. Councilman Miller talks about strategic plan, that's one of the things we want to do. So, yes, it is in the playbook to do.
I just wanted to make sure that was a topic, because we constantly hear the various different things when they're going for contracts and writing contracts, what the county and the state, as well as the federal government, ask them, and all this paperwork they have to do, and it takes away from programming and their day-to-day schedule. So, I'm glad that's a part of your discussion. My question in regards to going back to the board of care cost, and you said, "We're only going to, as a county, we're only going to take them in if we have safety concerns." And so, I'm a little concerned about that statement. So, could you share with us the new criteria of only safety concerns, we'll have children brought into our board and care? So, if you could provide with this council, what are the other reasons in the past that we took in children, and what is the determination of safety?
Let me rephrase. We're not changing our front door, meaning how we take in kids, to any significant extent based on this new pilot program with the Adams Board. Child abuse neglect is extraordinarily sensitive and subjective issue, and we are not, we're not reframing the door, we're not closing the door, we are keeping it the way it is. But we can do better on those children that come in for reasons other than safety or abuse or neglect. Like mental health, pure mental health cases, developmental disabilities. Sometimes we, I have the data back in my office that shows the hundreds of kids over the past year, two years that have come in into our care for reasons other than, for the mental health reasons or DD. Now, do some of those, should some of those kids have come in? Absolutely, yes. And we will continue to have those kids come in. But there's a portion of those kids that came in that didn't need to. And so, that's the collaboration. That's collaboration we're setting up with DD, with Kelly Petty, and that's a collaboration we're setting up with Mr. Denahan and the Adams Board. How do we figure, how do we triage that so we don't unnecessarily traumatize a child again by bringing them into custody? So, but Councilwoman, we're not reframing the front end of the system. It's not about numbers, it's really not about dollars. It's about so we don't traumatize these children further by bringing them into care unnecessarily.
And I'm just amazed that we've been, that we haven't been better at that. You know, I'm concerned because I've been on council for five years, and I've watched the numbers of us taking in kids go down, go down, go down because of cost and budget crunches. And I'm just, I've always stated, I was kind of worried, you know, glad that our numbers are decreasing, but really, seeing the issues that are going out in our communities, that are happening in our communities today, just really can't buy into how these numbers have just drastically went down so fast. And no one can really ever stand before us and give us a good explanation of how these things have went down. Now, you're, and I think in the past, they've stated that they were going to do things like this, and now you stand before us and tell us that these are the directions that we're going to move in and that in the past, we have taken in kids that we shouldn't have taken in, and so...
But Councilwoman, if I just may say, children's safety is not about dollars to me. If I need to come back to you in '16 as an adjustment period and say, "I need $3 million more dollars because I have an increase in kids coming into care," I'll do it. It's not about the dollars. It's about providing safety, permanency, well-being to these kids and not further traumatizing them unnecessarily by bringing them into care.
I want to stop you right there. I get that, and I'm not saying your heart is not in the same place as mine. Maybe I'm not clear. I'm not understanding, or I haven't understood fully, how... I'm not understanding, or I haven't understood fully, how... Because everybody's determination of how a kid is being abused is different. So I need to clearly understand how the county is viewing that. I mean, as a mother to a different mother, our views may be different, how someone, how a kid should be taken in under the county's care. And those are the calls that I receive. You know, this kid should be taken out of this home because A, B, and C, and I'm not, you know, totally clear, and I want to be more clear on how that is determined by this office.
Councilwoman, I would be very happy to bring a group of my folks over at your convenience to give you a briefing on that. I could do it for an hour or three hours. At some point, at your convenience, I'd be glad to do that.
We'll do it in committee.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Hairston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two of my questions that have been answered from Mr. Brady and Mr. Jones, as it relates to the pilot program between Children and Family Services and Adams Board. But I do have one outstanding question. Talk to me about how that will be funded. We know that the Adams Board currently, this budget is being reduced. And when we put together this pilot program and in relationship building with you and the Adams Board, how is this going to be funded with the children who will not be serviced by the Adams Board?
It's through Medicaid. There's no... I wouldn't say there's no county, there's no levy or county dollars involved, there's minimal. And we do subsidize that through our process now, and we're not going to stop that. The major funding source is Medicaid, and we will... That's how that will get paid for.
Okay, so Medicaid would be the main funding source, but I guess it's hard for me to understand how the... If we're reducing the Adams Board budget, we'll propose to reduce Adams Board budget, and then we shift... Well, you say we're not shifting, but we create this pilot. Do we lose the quality of care of services that are provided to these children by sending them to an agency whose overall budget for operation will be reduced?
Well, you'd have to ask Mr. Dennehan that question. I believe that we wouldn't be reducing the quality of services. I think that the Adams Board and their provider network are extraordinarily professional and have great quality of service. The Medicaid services, there's a menu approach, they have good quality services. I don't see it as an issue. But again, we're right in the beginning stage of this, and to be fair to both the Adams Board and us, you know, we're developing this triage program. I don't know how it's going to look like. We're reviewing the records, we're reviewing the data. We need to meet with the executive and Mr. Dennehan and myself and some other folks to look at how this is going to play out, and then the decision we made to go forward or not. And so we need to continue to work on this, and we have a short window to make this happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one of the committees that I haven't had the pleasure of sitting on in the last five years is Health and Human Service. But what I've heard here, the first department in the presentation, I'm impressed with the fact that you weren't happy with the status quo. A lot of times on doing budgets, it's what we had, and we need more, and we need more. But you're taking on the task of trying to reinvent the wheel and see if we've been spending these funds effectively, and I think it's pretty impressive. So I look forward to your endeavors, saving the county money and giving better service to the clients.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I have some questions, but I'll entertain any others before I begin. Chair reserves right to go beyond three. So I think it's... There's this integration of two departments, and one of the first lines in our budget book talks about a million-dollar savings or an increase in revenue as a result of this. And I'm sure it's a combination of your presentation and the next presentation, but how is it that that million dollars is anticipated to be realized, whether it be cost reductions or increase in grants?
When we set up our different... The way the departments are set up right now, we do 4E drawdowns for back offices, contracts, budget, HR, et cetera. We get a certain reimbursement rate for those drawdowns from 4E. Right now, they are stovepipe, they're siloed. When we do shared services, we get a higher 4E drawdown rate from those back office services. And they will result in anywhere between a $730 to $1 million in savings or additional drawdown for us that we don't have right now. And again, I am not a CFO, I don't even pretend to be one. That's why Walter is here, and if he wants a little more detail on exactly how that plays out, either we can do a private briefing with you and the committee, or I can have him come up now and talk more about it.
Well, that'd be up to the members of the council. Would you like just a brief... We have been an hour or so, I'm not trying to disguise... I'm not saying that... This is... Look, you know, children are stealing this from somebody. Children are 30% of our population, 100% of our future. And this is an important component of what we do in providing human services. But I don't want to shortchange other agencies' opportunity to speak and present, because this is important. But there's been a request, so if we can get a brief understanding... This is important, because this is one of the major initiatives of the administration in to coordinate efforts between these two entities. So if you can explain where a million dollars is coming from, that would be helpful.
Certainly. Currently, the agencies are all structured with back office administration in them. So Job and Family Services has back office admin, Child Support has back office admin, and Children and Family Services has back office admin. Children and Family gets about a 30% reimbursement rate overall. Child Support gets a 66% reimbursement rate. JFS is about a 50% reimbursement rate. If we combine all those together, one back office operation, we consider that a shared service. That shared service gets allocated rather than direct charge to the programs, netting us to $700,000 to $1 million in additional revenue.
Okay.
It's federally approved method of cost allocation. We're considered state-supervised, county-administered. This is their allocation methodology, not ours. We would just be switching to the shared versus the direct charge.
Okay. That sounds like a smart proposition. And I'm going to ask Mr. Carroll to step forward, not only as the interim, but you're kind of the last man standing for the past administrations, the former chief of staff. Why was this never contemplated in the past?
I think, actually, Walter can talk about that, too. It's been done different ways in the past, and I think the consolidation of Child Support and JFS, that moved in that direction. I mean, as far as this last step, I'm not sure exactly why. Walter, can you speak to any of the history?
Well, in the past, we were a double combined. We combined Children and Family Services with Job and Family Services. About five, maybe eight years ago, we added Child Support to the mix, adding the triple combination. But the issue was that we still had administration in all of the agencies. The only department that we considered a shared service was Matt Carroll's executive office, which was previously Rick Warner and then others before him. So we always did claim some shared cost using this methodology, but never to the extreme that we want to go to now.
Have you looked... Obviously, budgets are operational and aspirational, and the questions we're asking to ensure the operational component is sound, and the aspirational helps get us to a better place. Are there any other efficiencies you see that you're aware of that we may be able to maximize some savings?
Certainly. We just took a cursory review of this. The only thing that we have included in our current analysis is salary fringe benefits and two of our co-located leases. There's more beyond that. There's overhead, there's other things that we can... Those will materialize through this process.
Are they...
They're not in the budget.
They're not in the budget?
No.
Okay. All right. Great, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I have a few other questions. So this goes to ensuring that services are being met in the face of reductions. So if you look at some of, and whether you're looking at our document or what's in the budget book, there are a number of programs being reduced, whether it's kinship daycare support, mileage reimbursements, daycare support for foster parents, respite care for foster parents, Board and Care, which we talked about, is over $3 million. With the tapestry we spoke of earlier, how are we certain, since I'm hearing a lot of ifs, whether it be based on a pending ERP implementation or the expectation that we have a desire to do things with very little or no data? How are we certain that with these reductions, that the quality of service delivery is not impacted?
Mr. Chair, the... I wouldn't... The reduction is... I would use a different syntax with that. We had a surplus and a rollover that we no longer need, or that we had given up in order to hit our reduction based on what the executive gave us. We didn't cut into the programs. If you look at my responses, I think you have them, is that adjustment for unused funds, surplus carried over from previous years, surplus from our master contracts, rolling vacancy savings.
So it's what we're saying, and you weren't here, but that the budget, the previous budget either was not maximized because services were not needed, so effectively, we had a... I don't want to use the word bloated, but we had an over-budgeted budget?
Is that a question?
Yes. Yeah. I was trying to get to the question mark at the end.
I wasn't here during that time. I would say that in our analysis, when we did review the budget, we found some areas that had unused dollars and that we were able to use that to make the expectation of the executive.
Yeah, see, the challenge... See, here's the challenge. I don't disagree with what was budgeted versus what was realized, you know, as far as what was truly expensed. But the challenge is, and it's through a various number of assumptions and policy changes to the budget, is if you have a, say, let's say Board and Care is $3 million, you would expect, if that line is being reduced because we're not realizing that level of need, that the reserves would have been increased because we're just shifting it down below. Instead, we're diverting those resources in other areas, and especially when we're seeing a slight increase in property tax revenue, which obviously is a major component, about 90% of the revenue coming into that fund, and a reduction in costs, recognizing the $13 million shift that Mr. Miller talked about from the general fund to the levy fund, that we would have expected more in the reserve line. We're not seeing too many increases in programming. So that's what I'm trying to look at as I'm diving into this budget, to understand some things, as to increase in revenue, reduction in expenses, and the reserves are staying flat. So maybe not to you, but just a general statement. But let me ask you some questions. I'm going to make this brief. This is minor, but I would argue that the $40,000 in the contract for the Lexis Nexis contract, because you're going to consider the idea of merging it with the Law Department, everybody else did that a few years ago, so I would anticipate through this budget process, you may be compelled to participate with the Law Department's.
I would be happy to. This is the first I really heard of it, when I saw it on your presentation, working with Director Tarazi of the absolute willing to do so.
Well, there's $40,000 right there, so we can look at that. There's a reduction in accreditation service of $40,000. What accreditation are we no longer going to be seeing?
That's the Council on Accreditation that happened about eight years ago, that the department went through an extensive process, which actually, in the initial template of that COA accreditation is wonderful. The problem is, is that I've had experience with the COA in other states, and once you go through an initial policy and procedure review, and that is, it's an awesome review, and it takes hundreds of hours of staff time, and you get your policies and procedures up to a place where they are actually meaningful, the subsequent years that go by, the COA, the amount of return you get back from the Council on Accreditation is practically nothing. So it's a $40,000 a year protocol that I get real no benefit from. And although the initial... I absolutely would endorse for any county or any state that's looking to do the policy and procedures initial, you know, pay out those initial dollars to get your policies and procedures in place, but subsequently, I mean, there's just no bang to their dollar. And if you look across the state of Ohio, there's a number of other counties that have canceled their COA just because of the same process. I mean, you're just not getting enough value on their return.
There are no negative ramifications, meaning we're not... It's not a criteria required for grants or other type of funding?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. I have no other questions. Anyone else have any further questions? Mr. Hairston.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I see there's a reduction in kinship daycare support. I had an opportunity to visit a group of women over in my district who are kinship caregivers. And one of the issues they were talking about was not having enough funding to really support the family that they brung into their home to take care of. And their issue, and actually, they called me two days ago, because they saw that that was part of the recommended budget, that the kinship services would be reduced, the funding for that. We have a society that is changing. We have so many more issues than we've ever had before as it relates to our children and the people who are within our families. And to reduce services for kinship care, I think would be the wrong thing to do. And if we reduce that and not put that into some reserve, so that level rises, that that money is there, instead of you having to come back to this council, I think that is one thing. I understand that foster care, daycare support for foster care parents, I get that, and that comes along with being a foster care parent, is getting help from us. But kinship is something that we want to see. We want the family members to take care of these young people and not put them back into society, and to reduce that, without putting that money in a reserve, is the wrong thing to do.
Would you like me to comment on that, sir? When we did the analysis with the data, the $170,000 was reduced because of lack of participation. So let me pause right there for a second. I am an absolute supporter of kinship care. We are trying to find ways... We have no budget asks this year, but in the coming years, I want to look at how do we fund kinship care at the same level we do foster parents, so that we can pay them... And it's a whole philosophical statement for me. I'm a big supporter of kinship care, but the data just didn't reflect the ability to... For the utilization. I hear what you're saying, and I am a big supporter. Again, it was something that my staff came up with and that I agreed to, as far... Whether it goes into reserve or whether it's cut, that's another discussion with council to have.
Just to that point, I appreciate that response. Part of the conversation I had with these women who are kinship caregivers is that the amount of red tape, the process it takes to become these caregivers, and the time it takes to work through that is very, very long. And that could be part of the reason of not having the level that we would like to see of kinship caregivers.
Councilman, we want to... Believe me, if I get rid of red tape, I'd be... It'd be awesome. I'm not a big fan.
I know we need red tape, but then there's some things that are just...
Right. No, to your point, look, kinship care, we should be asking kin to take care of the kids that are related to them. That's an absolute no-brainer for anybody. We also don't have to have them get licensed as foster care folks. So that red tape, they don't have to deal with. As we get into the spring and the summer, you know, the kinship piece, as I said earlier, what mechanism can we do to make sure that they can get some redress for their financial issues as they take these kids in? That's on the table with my senior staff and my folks, so that we can look at that. I don't know how else to put it. I am a big fan of the kinship piece, and like I said, whether the $170 is in reserve or whether it's taken off the table, if that utilization comes up, we will address that need as an agency.
I know for me, I don't know, I can't speak to the other council members, if you can forward that information to the clerk after your staff has gone through that, just to kind of see where you are after you've looked at what you just explained.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, and members of the council.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Senior and Adult Services, Dr. Jones.
You're getting a lot of praise today, but we understand. But thank you, Councilmember Greenspan, for the invitation. Thank you, President Brady. On behalf of the Division of Senior and Adult Services, we are greatly appreciative of the major investment of Health and Human Service levy dollars that really have been invested in services for seniors. Our mission, simply stated, is to enable seniors and adults with disabilities to age successfully, and also through the provision of resources to preserve as much independence as possible. And just to give you some additional data and information, we provide six core programs throughout Cuyahoga County. Those programs include the Adult Protective Services Unit that provides the state mandated service to protect and assist adults who are at risk of abuse, neglect, self-neglect, or financial exploitation. or financial exploitation. We also provide, secondly, the Options for Independent Living Program, that provides services to those who are frail or disabled. And we provide a range of services, including meals, personal care, emergency response services, homemaker services, tour services, and medical transportation. We also provide a program called Community Social Service Program, that provides funding for over 1,500 seniors, who are served through 19 senior centers throughout Cuyahoga County. Next, provide information outreach that provides assistance in applying for benefits such as the Home Energy Assistance Program, utility assistance programs. And it's interesting, in 2015, we have helped these seniors access over $300,000 of assistance in a range of benefit programs that are offered through our county. We also provide home support, which is a combination of personal care and homemaking service. And we provide a centralized intake system. So that really represents the core of who we are. And just a couple of data points that I think are really relevant to our conversation. When you think about the fact that in 2030, 31% of our population in Cuyahoga County will be 60 years of age and older, so that the infrastructure that we are building now is really critical to our capacity to provide a growing segment of our community. We often think of the children, the youth population, and how that group continues to grow and present a number of challenges. But I think our division is also representing the voices of seniors, who, by the way, are growing at a faster rate than those 20 years and younger. So by 2030, we will experience in Cuyahoga County a tremendous surge in the growth of this population. And just some other data points. On average, it probably costs us about a little under $300 per month to provide homemaking services to a senior on a weekly basis over the course of four weeks. Contrast that number with the numbers that we are very familiar with. Nursing home care is typically $6,300 for a month. Contrast that number with what the costs are for living, for services provided through an assisted living facility. Those costs are between $2,000 and $4,000 a month. And on average, the cost for a three-day hospital stay for seniors is approximately $12,000. So our capacity to help seniors to remain independent and to remain in their own homes generates incredible cost savings for our community when you contrast that with hospitalization or entry into a nursing home or entry into any assisted living care facility. We are proud that, we are forecasting this year, we will serve 32,000 seniors and adults with disabilities. We are proud that when you look at the units of service that we provide, they include providing over 150,000 meals this year through both our progressive meal program as well as our home-delivered meals. We have also, thank you, we also taken a closer look of how well we are meeting our service targets. We are convening weekly team meetings, looking at contract utilization rates, and by the way, because of these processes, we have seen a dramatic increase in contract utilization, moving from the lower 6% range to the higher 80% range. We're also providing support to 19 senior centers and exploring the possibility of increasing this number to providing support for 21 senior centers in fiscal year 16 and 17. And through the Office on Aging, we continue to generate increased awareness about the important services that are provided to seniors in our community through mechanisms such as the recent conference on aging that we sponsored in partnership with Metro Health. We also have finally adopted and successfully implemented a new case management system called PeerPlace that will generate more accurate reporting and also, I think, get to some of the issues that we've been talking about around performance-based contracting. As we look at finally new initiatives that we helped to run in 2016 and 2017, we are planning to focus on seven key areas. These areas include developing a business plan for two of our six core programs, including the options program and the home support program. Number two, to improve the division's financial performance, ensuring that Health and Human Service levy dollars are invested in our programs in our full expense through service provision to seniors and adults with disabilities. We want to increase the division's service impact to the community in meeting its mandated services to reduce, neglect, abuse, and exploitation by pursuing new funding opportunities. We want to expand services that are provided to senior centers from 19 to 21. We want to conduct a strategic plan 2020, and we want to explore the development of other revenue sources in other, in order to leverage our Health and Human Services levy dollars. Finally, I would just like to say that the team is really very focused on maintaining the strong reputation that the division represents in the arena of services for seniors and adults with disabilities. So I will stop there, and I'm more interested in using whatever voice I have remaining to respond to the questions that you have around the budget.
Okay, before entertaining questions, I have a question for the administration. I don't know if it's Mr. Glassburn or Mr. Kennedy. Some of the questions that were asked, two questions were asked of council, had to do with the reduction in the budget for home meal delivery, homemaking services, medical transportation, reduction of funding for EMS, reduction of funding for Grab Bar Services, as well as additional fund, funding for hot meals and bed bug removal. Those were not included in the original budget, but in the notes we received, it says that those reductions had been restored. Is that, have those items all been restored to the budget?
Mr. Chairman, those items are not included in this budget. The starting base point was the as-adopted 2015 budget, and those items were not included at, as of that time.
But one of the, the responses to one of the questions for senior and adult on, on everything I just read except hot meals and bed bugs, says all reductions were restored because of the critical nature of its reserve, of its services. So are those, is that statement, then, that response not correct? Those items are not restored in the budget?
The comment is in response to the, many of the departments offered suggestions for reductions, not all were accepted. All of these suggested reductions that were previously included in the 2015 adopted budget were restored or not accepted as reductions. But those items that you listed are not included.
Okay, so, so those items were not, okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, as I, as I understand the response, those, those items I read, although the answers provided appear to be in contrast with the answer we just received, those, those items I read are not in the budget, are not in the document. Is that correct?
The items that you read are not included in the budget. There were additional items offered by the department in response to the reduction request. Those items offered by the department were not accepted.
Okay, so, so the 1617 budget, home-delivered meals is reduced, is reduced by 117,000 in 16, and 122 in 17, as an example, just as, as it's stated in the book, in your book, in the administration's book.
That item is not included in the budget.
Okay. That's more clear, but if others have questions, I'll entertain questions. Where, why?
They're still reducing?
They're, they're not in the budget. All right. Okay, so Mr. Gallagher, Ms. Simon. Okay, Mr. Gallagher.
So these, these weren't offered, these were demanded to get to the 10% reduction, or close to 10% reduction.
The base, starting point in this process was the adopted 2015 budget. Since those items were not included in the budget, they were considered additions if they were to be included. There were some items that were added after the 2015 budget that have been added to this budget as well, but those items that were listed by the chairman were not included in that set of additions.
Okay, well, we have answers to questions direct, and they don't, they don't match up. So you have the largest growing population in Cuyahoga County, being told to cut 10% because?
Mr. Chairman...
You can just direct it.
Sure.
Yeah, please.
The, the executive in his comments last week outlined a number of reasons why the county faced a financial deficit. I believe his terminology was that we had a $68 million hole to come out of. That, those comments by the executive, the reasons listed, from the starting deficit of $32 million in 2015, to the additional items that are necessary for infrastructure and buildings, to a number of other items, are why that the county has limited resources for programming.
Yet we're going to expand in other areas.
There are some new initiatives by the executive.
Does that make sense anywhere else in the real world?
I believe that that would be a fair question for you to ask of the executive.
Which I would if he were here, and quite honestly, Mr. Fitzgerald was always here. And we're slinging bullets, I mean, let's, let's face it. I mean, you know, we've, I've got to go home and answer to my public, the people that vote for me or don't vote for me, more importantly. I come from a city where we cherish, support, and defend our seniors. Yeah, I don't think there's a community much like Strongsville where we take the hit that we, we take because of, of that population. There are two populations in this county that, that have no defenders, and that's the seniors and the children. And these seniors are taking it on the chin, and quite honestly, I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed. So, thank you for your response.
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, Director Jones, I, I just have one question as to regarding the, the senior community program with, which funds the senior centers, and, and I noted that the budget does provide for a slight increase in that, that line item. And my question is whether that line item will enable you to go from 19 to 21 centers, or whether if you go to 21 centers that you would have to come back to us for, for additional funding at a later time.
I think that the, the current budget for senior centers is at the $1.5 million level. As we have worked on the budget, I think there have been a lot of ins and outs over the past several weeks. I have had conversations with our team at D-SAS, I've had conversations with Chris, and conversations with other members of the executive team. From my perspective, I hope that we will continue our discussions and review the status of that particular line item, because the funding as it is now will provide support for 19 centers. That's the reality. But again, I really respect the, what our collective vision is for the county, where the priorities are, but I'm hopeful we'll have an opportunity, and as Matt Carroll indicated, I too would like to serve as a resource if there are additional discussions about services for seniors and how those might be addressed before the budget is finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you. And my reason for asking, and, and the administration, the question was, and to piggyback on Mr. Gallagher, I was encouraged to see that those items were restored into the budget, discouraged to find out now that, that the answer we received was not, was not the correct answer. Any other questions?
Just, Mr. Chair...
Yeah, Ms. Simon.
I waived my right to speak because I thought Councilman Gallagher would be echoing my thoughts, and he did. So I just want to say that, you know, I agree that the seniors are most treasured, a part of our population, aside from children, and the most vulnerable, and I, I don't think we can take anything away from them at this point. I think we need to, when we come time to discuss this, maybe add some additional funds.
Thank you. Ms. Conwell.
To the chair, to Dr. Jones. You stated before us, and, and in the previous administration, the Director of Senior and Adult Services also made all of us aware, if we weren't aware, that the senior population and how it's growing. You talked about that. I just want to know, have there been any real conversations, since we know those facts from the administration in regards to preparing for the future, and we're going to have seniors living longer, and more seniors, senior tsunami is, is what I'm told it's called? So is there any conversations going on now, how we're going to prepare for those, those needs of more hot meals and things of that nature? So instead of new initiatives, we already know that fact, so then we should be putting money in some kind of reserve to deal with those kind of, kind of issues? And I'm just, just wondering, are those conversations going on?
Yes, those conversations are going on. In fact, recently, I've had an opportunity to have a discussion with Matt Carroll and also with Sharon Sobel Jordan to talk about the growing needs of seniors in our community. And I think that they were both very responsive and very attentive to the issues. We talked about the importance of the looking ahead at what the future really does present on the horizon, and that as a, as a county, we have to strive to really build the network of service that is so necessary to really serve that community. So I think there is recognition that this is a very important group of people that we need to serve in our community. So I want to commend Matt Carroll and also Sharon Sobel Jordan for really listening to the appeal that I made.
Okay, and so, maybe you can tell us, what was the actual reduction in your, in your, in your budget? Was it, was it 10%?
No, I, the county executive really requested that I outline what my priorities are, and I indicated that priority one was a full restoration of all cuts that were proposed under the 10% policy. Number two was to provide support for two new senior centers, one in East Cleveland and also one in Strongsville. And number three, I wanted to really explore the development of what I'm calling the Senior Center Innovation Fund. So I reviewed those concepts and those directions, and I was really quite pleased that there was restoration of the cuts that were included under the 10% policy. The adjustments, I think that we need to continue to explore are around the bed bug program, as well as the additional funding that was provided by council for additional meals. Those are the two questionable items. And again, because there was so much in and out activity over the past three weeks as we've been looking at the budget, I think that there, I have to say, a willingness to review those areas of concern.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, sorry about that. You, you brung up one point. You talked about the request to add two additional centers for funding, that was East Cleveland, and what was the other?
Strongsville.
Strongsville. Now, you also, before that, your comments were that seniors are, and children are, are those who need the most protection.
Most vulnerable.
And the most vulnerable. And East Cleveland, being the most impoverished community in this county, whose center closed early this year, and who, who have, who, who, a community who suffers from the mental health issues, I've had calls about the bed bugs issues, and, and for, and for now, I guess I'm being, I'm hearing that East Cleveland is not being, was not considered, along with Strongsville, to receive funding under this program that, that funds the senior centers in Cuyahoga County.
The budget as presented right now only includes funding for 19... The budget as presented right now only includes funding for nineteen centers, and, but there is discussion underway now with the executive and with other leadership team members to talk about the importance of looking at funding for Strongsville and funding for East Cleveland. As I indicated, I have offered my willingness to be a part of those discussions, and I would definitely like to serve as a resource for a number of reasons. One, I've had an opportunity to really visit Strongsville Senior Center, and I've had an opportunity to spend time in the senior center in East Cleveland. I plan to return to East Cleveland on Monday, and I'm very impressed with the operations, very impressed with the array of services that are provided. I think we have to keep in mind that when you look at seniors, over seventy-three percent of seniors live alone, and one of the biggest concerns that we all have really relates to the fact that they are so socially isolated, so that the senior centers really provide an opportunity for social networks, and meals, and the kinds of connections that will enable them to really lead lives with dignity and to live lives with fulfillment. So I think that's why I'm such a strong advocate on behalf of the senior center concept and the role it does play in the network of programs and services that we are really building on behalf of seniors in Cuyahoga County.
And because of that reason you just gave, is why East Cleveland and Strongsville should be the other two centers that are funded up under this model, because it does just that. And again, for East Cleveland, for a community that are going through the issues that they are facing now, and the issues that we see on the horizon, that is the very, that's the very argument I would make also about why East Cleveland and Strongsville should be funded, part of these other nineteen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
And to be fair to the administration, I don't think they've been out to Strongsville. I know I had you come out to Strongsville, Doctor, and what we did, where we started in Strongsville, we started at zero. We had nothing. And we had to go to our community to build our center. But what we did do, or I should say what we didn't do, is we didn't put up walls. We encouraged people from all over, and not even just in Cuyahoga County, we have Medina residents, Brook Park, Berea, North Royalton, from all around the region that come to our center at a very, very, very reduced cost, at a cost to the taxpayers of Strongsville close to seven hundred thousand dollars. And I was council president, that's hard to tell some residents what you're doing, but it's easy when they see what we provide and what we're doing. As the doctor said, this is a quality of life situation, and what we provide, I think, should be provided or looked at on a pilot program around Cuyahoga County. People need to see what we're doing in Strongsville. There is a cost, and we made the command decision as elected officials to provide these services out of our budget, which we are not a very well-to-do community, in spite of what some people think. When I first started, our budget, we had about thirty thousand dollars left over in our budget. Now, things have gotten better, and I attribute that to the leadership in Strongsville, and I was a little bit part of that. And I'd like to be a little bit part of expanding services to mirror what's going on in Strongsville and provide to East Cleveland and other sections of Cuyahoga County these services that we provide out there. We have to make a tough decision on whether or not we're going to do it, and even tougher, can we find the money to do it? I appreciate the fact that there are tough times, that we are facing tough times. I've never been in elected office where we've had discretionary funds, ever, nineteen years, never had discretionary funds. I'd love that day to come, I don't think I'll ever see it, but we made decisions on doing that. I would encourage, before this process is over, that the administration come out to Strongsville, take a look at what I'm talking about. I think it becomes clearer as to what I think, at least, and I would imagine Dr. Jones sees as a vision for Cuyahoga County. And we're not talking about nineteen individual centers, we're talking about regional centers, regional, where we're drawing from many cities. We were told that we couldn't do it with dispatch, we did it. It took us five years, but we did it, and we hit some rough spots, but we did it, and we sold it to the right people, and they bid. And I think it's one of the great things we've done. We're offering other services throughout the county to less fortunate communities, and even well-to-do communities that are jumping on board with some of the services that we're offering. This is a quality of life situation, and I would speak to you privately to come out and see what we're talking about, I think the vision becomes clearer. And then we have to figure out if there's money to do it, and that's all I ask. That's all I'm going to ask. I turn it back over to Chair.
Mr. Hairston, then Mr. Schron.
Just to follow up to Mr. Gallagher's point and Dr. Jones's point, Strongsville has a very, very extraordinary program and building there where they are in Strongsville, and they will be an exceptional model to other senior centers around Cuyahoga County, and to move to a regional approach, they are really, really setting the mark for that. Just one other point, your answer also talked about new resources to help offset some of the costs of operating these programs. Briefly, can you tell me about, I know we've been in discussion about others who have come to the table to be supportive of the senior services restoration in East Cleveland, and those who have pledged commitments moving forward, so that as long as the county is involved, providing support as well?
In East Cleveland, there are a range of organizations that are willing to step forward, including their federal savings bank, including the Rose Centers, including the Benjamin Rose Institute, and also including the McGregor Foundation. Those institutions have really provided some form of support to help sustain some presence for seniors in East Cleveland. And I have to say that New Life Cathedral Church has done an exemplary job of really providing a venue where those senior services are being conducted. So they are also a very important part of the formula that has really been developed in order to sustain commitment to senior centers in East Cleveland. So the expectation and hope is that somehow Cuyahoga County will also be a part of that solution as they're looking ahead over the next two to three-year period.
And the city themselves are also looking to be a player in helping to keep.
Oh yes, I should mention that, in fact, Councilor Hairston, I really want to acknowledge your help. City of East Cleveland is willing to provide an opportunity for the Rose Centers to apply for a thirty-five thousand dollar community block grant program. That was a new opportunity that was not clear before, but because of the discussion, there is a process now in place to add that revenue stream to the funding that we're trying to really develop on behalf of the East Cleveland Senior Center.
So the players you've mentioned, East Cleveland coupled with the funding that could possibly come from Cuyahoga County, put together will produce an extraordinary outcome for the seniors in that city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hairston.
Thank you, Mr. Schron.
Good morning, Doctor.
Good morning, Mr. Councilor Schron.
How well are we coordinating with the Salvation Army with what they're doing out there? Because I know that, I think November second, I don't know, I'm sure Mr. Hairston's aware that they're doing their biggest single expenditure in the history of the Salvation Army in East Cleveland for a senior center. And are we, senior center and child care center, both in East Cleveland, Collinwood, and there's a third location downtown, that they're breaking ground on the largest expenditure in the history of the Salvation Army on November second in East Cleveland. So I would hope that we're coordinating with that kind of activity. Pardon?
We're currently not engaged in discussion with them at this point in time. The Rose Center that's really operating the program in East Cleveland has a new executive director, but that's a resource that we plan to share and will look at, that's another reason I'm going out on Monday, is really to identify who are the other potential strategic partners that we might incorporate into our planning process, and I think Salvation Army certainly is one of those key organizations.
Yeah, this is not potential, they are breaking ground on the largest expenditure in the history of Salvation Army.
We will definitely pursue them.
So if they're not on our radar screen, we better elevate that, because East Cleveland is one of the centers that they are putting in millions and millions and millions of dollars into, and it's, I think it's November second is the groundbreaking in East Cleveland. There's one taking place in Collinwood, and then the third one is a little closer to downtown, but there's.
Appreciate that information, Councilor Schron.
Thank you, too, and I'm well aware of that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You had mentioned that you requested to restore the proposed cuts. Just a point of clarification, who recommended the cuts to start?
The reductions were in response to the request that came from the county executives that we look at a ten percent reduction in our budgets, so that we took that to heart. Our team met, we knew we had to make some very difficult choices, make some very difficult decisions, and that's how we arrived at the ten percent reduction plan that was submitted to the county executive in response to the request that was made. So that came out of our team effort, and basically what we were trying to do was we were trying to protect as many essential services as possible. So even though we reduced some of our meals, we wanted to keep as many meals as possible still in the budget. Even though we reduced trips, we wanted to protect as many trips as possible, because those are tied into medical visits. So I thought our team came up with the best way of trying to address the request, and through a collaboration with Jobs and Family Services and with Child and Family Services, they were able to provide some funding that provided us relief. So I want to acknowledge that that collaboration was really integral to our ability to put together a budget reduction process. But we were elated when we were informed that there was recognition that this was a very, very important population, that we wanted, and the response was that the plan was to restore the cuts that were being proposed, and recognition that these are seniors who are vulnerable and at risk, and there's a commitment to protect them to the fullest possible extent.
Thank you. Given the nature that we have discovered that some of these critical services have not been restored, I just want to make sure we're still on track with the lease agreement that we have been discussing for the last several months.
My understanding is that the lease agreement is still active, and we really appreciate, Councilor Brown, your involvement and your commitment to the Mount Pleasant community, one that we all share. In our budget, it includes the assumption that we will maintain the lease agreement with the Mount Pleasant Development Corporation.
But within the terms that we discussed?
Within the terms that we discussed, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
One final, one final, I have one question, and then I wanted to get Mr. Merriman at least to give his introduction before we take a break, and he'll come back and answer questions. Homemaking services, the two hundred and seven and sixteen and two fourteen and seventeen, are they, I'm confused, are they in your budget or not?
Homemaking services are in the budget.
Okay.
The areas.
But it was reduced?
Homemaking services at the same level. The area that we are, having continuing discussion about relates to meals and the bed bug program. Those are the two areas.
So in the brass budget book that we used to analyze the cuts, it said there was a reduction for homemaking services of two hundred and thousand, two hundred and seven thousand dollars in 2016. So did that eliminate homemaking services, or it reduced it by two hundred and seven? So you're still providing homemaking services?
I'm definitely still providing homemaking services. I'm going to ask my business services manager to join me. His name is Eric Martin, so we can just clarify this point.
PJ, do you have a question?
Yeah.
What's that?
Under homemaking services, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you. For homemaking services in 2016, 2017, I think it's a two hundred and seven thousand dollar investment currently.